Just like that, at 7:49, the Lansing City Council is called to order. So Wood, Clerk Swope, who is now joining us from Committee of the Whole, please call the roll.
Councilmember Vets?
Yes, here.
Councilmember Dunbar?
Yes.
Councilmember Garza?
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Present.
Councilmember Spatafor?
Present.
Councilmember Spitzley?
Here.
Councilmember Wood?
Here.
There are eight members present in the quorum, no members are absent, and that takes us to the meditation and Pledge of Allegiance.
Yes, so I will open it up to councilmembers who wish to have us keep someone in our thoughts this evening as we reflect in a quiet moment of meditation. Mr. Jackson?
Yes, thank you. Prayers to the family of Stephen Jackson and Marcus Jackson, two victims of unnecessary gun violence here in Lansing. I knew Mr. Marcus Jackson pretty well. He was a great student and track athlete at Sexton High School, very good person and father. He moved from Lansing to Texas and came back home and unfortunately died in the same neighborhood that he lived. So keep their family in our prayers and everybody affected by gun violence, period, but especially the Jacksons at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Jackson. Councilmember Hussein?
You know what, I was also going to ask that we remember the friends and the family members of both Stephen and Marcus. Although I didn't know either one of them, they are both, you know, obviously native sons of Lansing, and I do know a host of family members and friends that they left behind. And as we honor them, I also ask that, you know, we rededicate ourselves and we recommit ourselves to the absolute critical work necessary to ensure that, you know, the city of Lansing is the absolute best place and most safe place to raise a family, to live, to advance oneself and their families. And I ask that we do that, obviously, in the honor of both Stephen and Marcus. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hussein. Councilmember Spitzley?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd also like to extend my sympathies. You know, Councilmember Jackson was there on Friday as well as we did the March for Peace Against Violence from Tabernacle of David down to the corner of Pleasant Grove and Homes. And it is really sad. You know, one of the things that, you know, you always try to look for a ray of light out of terrible tragedy, and one of the things that struck me was that the young man, one of the young men was an organ donor, and that, you know, he gave that sacrifice so that other people could have a chance at life. And just even thinking about it now, I get choked up as a mother of two sons. And I agree, we must rededicate our lives and rededicate ourselves to making this community a better place. I think that, you know, COVID, you know, I don't think that people are meant to be cloistered like this, and I think that a lot of times, that's part of the issue that's going on today where, you know, we're kind of acting out and lashing out because of it, but we need to do better. And we all need to do better. We all need to do better to make sure our neighbors are taken care of. And so I just wanted to extend my prayers to that family as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Spitzley. Councilmember Wood?
Thank you. I have two, if we could remember, please, James Butler, who just recently passed away, who served not only on the Lufka Board, but served with the Lansing Regional Chamber of Commerce, served on the Martin Luther King Commission, has done numerous things in our community, and our prayers need to go out to his family at this time. Also pastor, Donnie Caddell, who is the pastor, was the pastor of Friendship House of Prayer, died on August 2nd of complications of COVID. He was 51 years old and leaves behind a family. And if we could remember his family as well as his church family at this time, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Wood. Before I move on to the mayor, I have one as well. Unfortunately, this list is long this evening, but we could all keep in our thoughts, Post-Oak teacher Harold Fernando, his students called him Mr. Awesome, but he was just one of the best Lansing schools the church family had to offer. I know the Post-Oak family and our entire community mourned his loss, tragic accident that took him at the age of 41. So if you could keep him and his family as well as the Post-Oak penguins in your thoughts. And then, Mr. Mayor?
Well, thank you. I was gonna mention James Butler also. He's a good friend. It's a very sad day amongst all the others that haven't been mentioned. So thank you, Councilmember Wood, for raising him and all the other councilmembers for talking about many of the tragic happenings over the last few weeks.
Thank you. I think that concludes our hands. So if we could all just bow our heads in a moment of silence, please? Thank you. Now join, well, I'll recite the Pledge of Allegiance for us. "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Thank you. Next?
Okay, we are to comments by councilmembers and the city clerk.
You all be careful. It's almost eight. Councilmember Spitzley?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to announce that the Committee on Equity, Diversity, Inclusion will be having a meeting on Wednesday, August 12th, 6 to 8. You know, the meeting will be discussing, we have a presentation on the Lansing Police Department budget, and our Chief Strategy Officer Judy Keeler will be there, and also Joe McClure from the Police Department will also be there. I urge you to participate, to come, to listen to the budget. Again, you know, the more information we have about what's going on, the more information on the budget, that's how we are informed, and that's how we make informed decisions. And so I urge you to join in, to listen to the budget, and so that we can have a robust discussion on how to proceed. So again, it's Thursday, August 12th, from 6 to 8. Thank you.
Thank you. Other councilmembers? Looks like Councilmember Hussein?
Yeah, just very quickly, you know, before our moment of silence, I asked that we rededicate ourselves and recommit ourselves to just the, you know, the critical work that needs to be done in this community to, again, advance this community. But I also want to recognize some of the fantastic work that is actually being done right now, and some of the folks that are actually doing that work. In particular, in southwest Lansing, there's been really an intensive effort at the intersection of Pleasant Grove and Homes over the last several years, and we've had the Southwest Action Group, we've had Rejuvenating South Lansing involved, we've had SLCA involved, we've had Invest Health involved, we have had City Council involved, the administration involved, we've had respective members of the community involved. And this really goes back to 2016. And really, what we were trying to do was to get out in front of, and that's what makes what happened last Monday even more tragic, is that we were trying to get out in front of these types of issues. That being said, dating back to 2016, we've put plans in place to move that intersection forward. We have built brand-new parks, we have built soccer fields, we have built playgrounds, we have, you know, engaged in facade work. You know, if you drive by 1910, obviously, it looks like a completely new store, you know, and the list goes on and on. One of the things that you have heard me talk a lot about, and it started a few years back when we were successful, and it was actually Councilwoman Dunbar who made the grant pitch, but we were successful in pulling down an art piece, and we decided that we really wanted to construct a town square at Pleasant Grove and Homes. And so for several years now, you've heard me talk about this, the potential for this. The Southwest Action Group really led the way in securing funding to actually buy property at the intersection for a town square. They then worked with property owners to actually secure that property. And over the last couple years, it has been a heavy lift, and I won't, you know, obviously get into the weeds here. But over the past several years, we've been working with everybody to make this a reality. And it is my absolute pleasure to announce that contracts have been signed and construction is imminent. And so you are actually going to see that town square begin to be constructed in the next few weeks. We are going to build that town square again. It is now, in some way, I believe, to honor Mr. Stephen and Marcus and all the individuals, you know, that have unfortunately passed in that way, but also the folks that have worked so incredibly hard to have the important conversations, to identify the problems that need to be solved, and to really advance that intersection and the folks that live in and at that intersection. So again, I want to thank the city, I want to thank LEAP, I want to thank Southside Community Coalition, SWAG, the list goes on. But in particular, I want to thank Rachel White, who is the president of the Southwest Action Group. And over the past couple of years, this project, I think, was in jeopardy of stalling out several times, and every single time, we, you know, there was a bump in the road or a hiccup, she found a way to really be the standard bearer, the torch carrier. She really has, I think, been instrumental in carrying the ball across the goal line. So again, I wanted folks to know that that was happening, and I wanted to absolutely thank and credit everybody that's been at the table to make this happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hussein. I don't see any more councilmembers, so let me just announce one thing also. Folks, we've talked a lot about the budget and priorities and things like that. As you're aware, or maybe not aware, October 1st is the deadline for budget priorities to be submitted to the administration, which means those budget priorities need to be finalized by this body on September 21st, Absent Day Special Meeting. So I will have Sheri send out to committee chairs and, I guess, to everybody, but with a special note to committee chairs to begin working on budget priorities through the committees. So everybody take a look at those budget priorities and, you know, take to your committees or to Committee of the Whole the changes that you wish to have presented. My hope would be that the budget priorities encompass two discussions in Cal. So if we could have them to the Committee of the Whole by the, once, two weeks before, the 7th of September, that might be a tall order. And if we have to have a special Cal meeting, we will, but I want to make sure that there's an opportunity so that any priority changes that need to come through are, 7th is Labor Day, so that won't work.
14th through 28th.
14, okay, on the 14th, so that gives you some more time. Thanks, Mr. Clerk. So have those to the Committee of the Whole, through your committee chairs and individual by the 14th of September, so we can have a robust discussion in Cal about it. Hopefully, that will work for everybody. So Councilmember Spitzley, and then we'll move on.
Thank you, Mr. President. I know that we have talked over the years about the format of the budget priorities. And so, you know, as we are getting ready to put forth new budget priorities for this administration, for the mayor, I get that each individual committee should discuss those, but I'm wondering if we should have a general discussion, a Cal discussion, before we move forward about maybe changing the format of the priorities, and see if there's a willingness amongst the body to change that format. I mean, you know, it doesn't make any sense to talk about it after the committees have done the work. I'd like to just have an initial discussion at a Cal meeting before we do that.
The, I'm sorry, Councilmember Spitzley, that's a great idea. As you know, I've been one of the lead voices on trying to change that format, well, at least one of them. I don't know if I'm the lead voice, but I've been a voice for that change. So yes, Sheri is listening in, so we'll take a note so that when Vice President Hussein and I set the agenda for Cal, that's an item that is imminent for discussion so that committees can begin their work. And that may actually not necessitate a two-week process in Cal if we do it earlier. So thank you for that suggestion. Okay, where are we? Mr. Clerk, we are to whatever's next.
Yes, I just want to briefly say, realizing the time, I want to thank everyone who was involved in the election last week. Over 18,000 people voted through absentee ballots, and almost 5,000 people voted at the polls. So thanks to all of my staff and election workers and all of the voters for helping make that a successful election. With that, we are to community event announcements. If there's anyone, if there are any attendees that have a community event to announce, we'll give you one minute to tell us the details of your event. So go ahead and raise your hand. And I feel a red a Stanaway, so I'll go ahead and allow you to make your community event announcement. Go ahead, Loretta.
Hi, the Friends of Lansing Historic Cemeteries will be hosting its third annual Service of Remembrance in Mount Hope Cemetery's Fratcher Memorial Garden on Sunday, August 23rd at 3:00 PM. This is an event for anyone who has lost a loved one in the past calendar year, who has had their remains or cremains in Mount Hope or Evergreen or North Cemeteries. This is a free event, open to the public, and we do encourage people to come prepared to be socially distant and to have a mask. If you don't have one, we'll have masks available for you. Again, this is Sunday, August 23rd at 3:00 PM in Mount Hope Cemetery's Fratcher Memorial Garden.
Thank you. And it looks like we have one more that I'm not sure.
I think it's, I believe that's my.
Michael Lynn, is that Michael Lynn?
My man, he recognized me.
He uses a different name every time.
The Village Lansing actually did the open house at the Capitol for the 2020 graduates, and we still have, we got together $150 per student, and we still have about 40 money orders for those children that graduated. They came, they registered, they signed their name on there, and we actually failed to get their phone numbers. So we're trying to get that money to them. So if anybody is aware of anybody that came to the open house at the Capitol, we still have their money orders. We'll hold them until they get them, so it's there. But if you can put that out, also, the Village Lansing just broke ground on our new building in the Kroger Plaza, which is going to house a resource and information center, place where we can mentor so on and so forth through the youth. We have a GoFundMe at thevillagelancing.com if anybody would like to donate to that purpose. That's it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So that seems to be the end of our announcements. So I'm announcing that we will be closing registration for public comment on legislative matters after the first speaker, when we get to that. So if you do want to press City Council on legislative matters, please go ahead and begin raising your hand. The items eligible for discussion on public comment on legislative matters include the consent agenda, resolutions for action, committee reports, ordinances for introduction, and ordinances for passage. So pretty much anything on the agenda that does not report from city officers or communication, so all the things that the council will be acting on tonight. And so go ahead and start raising your hands. And we are to the mayor's comments.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. President, Mr. Clerk. I want to thank everybody who participated in our town hall on the police budget last Wednesday. Clearly, if you missed that, then you have Councilwoman Spitzley's committee, so you get kind of a second bite at the apple. It's going to be a similar presentation, but I thought it was very well done by Judy Keeler, our Chief Strategy Officer, by Daryl Green, our police chief, by Kim Coleman, our Director of Human Relations and Community Service. Christopher Mombi did a great job with our IT. So then we had a tremendous participation from Lansing residents and non-residents, those around the community. So thank you, everyone who participated. I wanted to congratulate Clerk Swope, who did a fantastic job, he and his staff, on the election. Clearly, we're in a whole new world, and our city clerk and our clerk staff are doing a great job adjusting. So thank you, Clerk Swope. Coming up, we have our next concert in the park this Wednesday night at 7:00 PM at Hunter Park, so that should be fun. We also have our, some Walking Wednesdays are starting, so we're navigating some of that. I think they're going to be at SWAG this Wednesday, but I don't know the details on it. We're looking at doing some videos and things, so that's kind of a work in progress. We announced the mayor's water challenge last week, so we're asking everybody to be more, to conserve water and turn off sprinklers and do a variety of other things. There's a really good article in the City Pulse about it last week, about winning a new car and getting that donated to a charity. It's a national campaign that we have signed on to. Lori Welsh, our Sustainability Coordinator, has been directing that, so I hope people will sign on. We had a press release go out, so you can check the city's webpage on the water challenge. Then finally, I think he's on the line. I know you're short on time, so it's up to you, Mr. President. Rob Wadigan, who's our new Finance Director, today is his first day, and he's on the line. He can introduce himself to you, or if you're short on time and you want to just have folks introduce themselves to him as we go. I'm sure he'll be in committees and other things, but he is our new Finance Director. Jake Brower will resume his duties as Budget Director, doing a great job. And we're very confident in our finance team moving forward. So welcome to Rob, moved to Lansing. He lives here in Lansing, so one more exciting thing that he believes in Lansing is living here and will be our Finance Director. So I don't know if you want to invite him.
Mr. Mayor, I told you, yeah, to invite him over, just to do a quick intro. So Rob, why don't you go and say hi to the group? I'm sure we all want to know which ward you're in, just so we know who's going to like you the most, but welcome to Lansing.
Thank you. It's nice to virtually meet everyone. So as the mayor just mentioned, I'm Rob Wadigan. I just moved into the stadium district last Tuesday, it's right downtown. Congratulations, Councilman Vets. So I'm still settling in, but, you know, today was my first day as Finance Director for the great city of Lansing. And just real quick, before joining the city's team, I was the Village Manager in Shelby, Michigan. And then prior to that, I worked kind of just across the street from City Hall for the Michigan Department of Treasury for almost five years, four and a half years. And there, I assisted local governments all across the state by identifying fiscal and operational stresses or weaknesses within their organization. So I look forward to working with everyone, and if you'd like to know more, just please feel free to call or text anytime.
Thank you very much. I don't see questions from the council, so we'll just say thank you and have a good evening, and we look forward to working with you over the next. We'll bring you in for those budget discussions, for sure.
Sounds great.
Thanks.
Okay, so we are to public comment on legislative matters. And again, legislative matters includes all of the items that council will be considering this evening. And we will be closing the sign up after the first speaker. It looks like I've got about six hands up so far, so please, if you want to address City Council on legislative matters, that's the narrower version of our comment, go ahead and raise your hand, and I'll go ahead and call on the first speaker, Darrell Coleman, followed by Danielle Hasty. Darrell, go ahead, you have three minutes.
Hello, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
All right. First and foremost, I want to thank City Council for allowing me to speak at the limited time I have, so I'll make it short. So I reached out to Mr. Jackson as terms of the parking ordinance. I received a ticket. It was earlier this week. It was $25. I live in the fourth ward, and I live directly in front of Sexton High School. I was told that in order to park in front of my house, because we have multiple vehicles in front of our house, I have to pay $100 plus for a parking pass. My thing is this, this is my two cents worth of opinion. I shouldn't have to pay an X amount of dollars just to park in front of my house, and I can utilize that money to something more convenient, because I think it's obvious, we're in the middle of a pandemic. Last thing people want to think about is, oh, I gotta spend $100 just to park in front of a house, when I could spend this on, you know, hand sanitizer, mask, and stock up on some food, because flu season is literally a few weeks away, and we're already in like the fourth quarter as far as COVID. And, I mean, we, there's more important things than just passing out parking ticket after parking ticket. It's bad enough, people are already stuck in their houses, they don't need to have another little fee. They're like, oh, well, now I'm ticked off now, because I'm already stuck in the house. I mean, there's nothing I can do about my parents having all these cars. I got a Jeep, and it's really big, and if I park in the driveway, the rear end of my truck is sticking out. So my thing is, can you all revise this ordinance and/or just eliminate it all entirely, because we got more important things to worry about, rather than just having to pay all this money for parking, if you know what I mean. And I say this respectfully.
Okay, thank you for your comments. And so now we are close to adding more speakers. We have, next is Danielle Hasty, followed by Jonathan. Danielle, go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thanks for virtually having me. My name's Danielle Hasty, as mentioned before, from California Commercial Investment Group. I'm here this evening to discuss the extension of the pilot agreement for the Porter Apartments located at 505 Townsend Street. As you may be aware, this is a 98-unit project based Section 8 property that houses low-income elderly and disabled population of Lansing. We're hoping it's on the agenda tonight, and we're hoping for the city's support in extending the pilot agreement so that we can apply for federal tax credits that will allow us to renovate the Porter Apartments and preserve it as low-income housing for the foreseeable future. This building has a HAP contract that is no longer, they don't make new ones since the late 70s or early 80s, I should say, and it's a safety net for the lowest-of-income senior residents, keeping them from being homeless. The building is in need of a facelift and a renovation of its building systems, among other things, in order to extend its useful life. If we don't get the credits and put millions of dollars into the building, we don't use the pilot, so it's conditional. This seems like a no-brainer for us. Extending the pilot would be conditional upon a successful credit application, like I said before. If our application to the state credit allocating agency is successful, the pilot would allow us to bring in millions of federal tax credit and private money to benefit the building. In addition to utilizing federal and private resources to renovate a building that keeps Lansing's low-income population housed, it would also serve to create local jobs by virtue of the millions of dollars of construction that would be occurring at the building. The proposal seems like a win-win for the city of Lansing, as it utilizes a program that is already in existence at the Porter Apartments, which is the pilot agreement that is currently in place, to bring in federal resources, the tax credit, and private dollars via pilot financing, to renovate a building that benefits low-income elderly residents in the Lansing community. Achieving this via the federal tax credit program would also ensure that the Porter Apartments remains low-income due to the recorded use agreement that would be required for the credits. Thank you in advance for your support, and I look forward to answering any questions that you may have.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Next is Jonathan, followed by Lou Melman. Jonathan, you are on, and can I further identify yourself if you, Rich?
Hi, wanted to thank Councilwoman Dunbar for the parking ordinances, looking to eliminate that absolutely right move in a city with a lot of tight residential areas where older houses weren't built when every member of a household has a vehicle needed for work. It doesn't make sense that we don't allow residents to park without having to pay fees on the city streets. I don't, my household doesn't have one old Model T, so it's very difficult to arrange vehicles in the little space that I have. So thank you for this sensible repeal of that legislation. That's all.
All right, thank you for your comments. Next is Lou Melman, followed by Michael Lynn, Jr. Lou, go ahead.
Hi, can you all hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Originally, I'm with Porter Apartments and California Commercial Investments, and Danielle had spoke. I originally raised my hand in case she missed something, but she was really eloquent and I think hit all the spots. But I just wanted to take a moment to say that, you know, as I've been watching the previous meeting and this meeting, I'm seeing what a dedicated community leader that you all are. And it's really nice with that, what you did at the beginning, acknowledging the people in your community. So I thought, you know, we've looked at deals around the country, and I've been on lots of meetings, and I thought that was really powerful, and I acknowledge you all for that. As far as the Porter of Apartments, again, we think it's kind of a no-brainer. It's win-win. We're providing housing for the poor. It's a backstop to people, to seniors. You know, we have some residents who are paying as little as $20 or $30 rent. And so if we lose this program, it's gone forever, and we don't want to lose it. We want to upgrade the building. We want to make it as beautiful. We want to make it as beautiful and nice of a building as possible. And it's our philosophy to always, that we tell our people that we want a building where our mothers can live. And so, that's my promise to you as the founder of the company, that we're going to do the best job possible. We're going to create the best living environment for the community, for your city, and for the building. So, with that, I'll leave it. Thank you.
Hello? Can you hear me? Okay.
Chris, you're muted, and Michael Lynn... Michael, you're three minutes. Well, Sherri, could you start that over, please? Mr. Lynn, your three minutes begin now, sorry about that.
Got you. So, I just wanted to comment on the reappointment of the fourth ward member of the Board of Police Commission. And all of these reappointments that I'm looking at here, I know that a couple city council meetings back, you guys had a lot of people on here from the community expressing disdain for that happening and being just kind of run-of-the-mill thing, and we're just going to keep reappointing, especially with the Board of Water and Light. You had multiple people coming on here expressing new blood needed. But aside from that, again, I'd like to, you know, speak on what Brian T. Jackson said when he brought this to the table probably two weeks ago, or maybe it was a month ago. The process of just, you know, reappointing people, especially in the time that we're in right now. I just, I don't understand how these appointments happen. I'm sure there's, I mean, you guys have a book of how all these things take place. But it just doesn't make sense to me how you guys came about with Dr. Carnegie. Great man, Sexton alum, and all that stuff. Aside from all that, this police commission...
Mr. Lynn?
Did we listen?
He's still there. Mr. Lynn? Give you about 10 seconds, then we'll move on. There's another opportunity for public comment at the end of the meeting. I think...
Oh. Yeah, hello?
Hello.
Okay. Was I messed up, or was the whole thing messed up?
I think it was you.
I think you were messed up, but we did pause your clock. So, Sherri, please resume the timer.
I don't know, Mr. Spatafor, you just called me messed up? Or you're talking about my internet?
Your internet, sir, I'm sorry.
I'm kidding. So, what I was saying is that I think that the processes need to change. The transparency has been an issue, obviously. Complaints are not being dealt with. We haven't seen anything go against the police in any of these issues and concerns. It just really disturbs me that in the point in time we're in right now, we're not taking a deeper look at that. And reappointments are happening as if they have for the last however many years. Again, I don't have anything negative to say about Dr. Carnegie, other than the fact that I just don't see a whole lot of representation of the people on these boards. I think I seen Larry Leatherwood was appointed to another board. I'm pretty sure he was on the Diversity and Inclusion Committee in the beginning. It seems like a shuffle here. It's always like, we're going to reappoint or move somebody in here, or move somebody there. And these are serious, obviously serious committees that need to be able to do work here. And I just think some fresh faces would be good on those. That's been expressed multiple times from people all across. Aside from that, I don't have anything else to say, other than, yes, I don't believe people should have to pay to park on the streets in front of their house. I think it's absurd. So, however you guys deal with that, thank you. I'll see you guys in a second.
All right, thank you. And that was the last person, I believe, that had their hand up by the time that we had called. So, we will move on to the consent agenda.
Hold on just a second, Mr. Clerk.
Mr. President, I think Erica Lynn had her hand up.
Yeah, I was just trying to figure that out. Erica Lynn, I think you actually got it in, but your hand went down middle of the session, so...
We'll go ahead and...
Yeah, we'll go ahead. Ms. Lynn?
Thank you, I appreciate that. I don't know what happened. I blanked out, and then I rejoined. Erica Lynn, lifelong Lansing resident. Listening to all the reappointments, I do also just want to echo what Mr. Lynn eloquently said.
I'm your husband!
As I was kind of working through all of that, I think I would just like to, you know, kind of make the statement that we're in a time right now where we can't afford to just continue to keep kind of doing the same, you know, more of the same. And I think that sometimes that's what it feels like. And so, with the, you know, thinking about a new perspective, you know, on different people coming in, and how that process even looks and what it's like, I think, you know, from the public standpoint, I would love to know a little bit more how those appointees, you know, are set. I know it's by the mayor. What, you know, how are those set? And is that process something that could be changed? Because we're in a time where we're talking about police budgets, you know, defunding and reallocation of funds, and those are some really serious things. But when you don't have new people coming in, if you've got more of the same, they may not be as willing to really do the research and really look into what that looks like. Is it possible? How can it be possible? So, you're not really looking at how to achieve that goal as a possibility, just simply because we're so hesitant to change. And that's just inherent human nature. So, I would just implore to say, you know, for the police commission, the reappointees, you know, really, really verse yourself. Talk to the community, talk to some of the leaders that really know their stuff about what defunding actually means, what it looks like, what the reallocation of funds could mean for the city of Lansing. Because I know that that is, if my understanding is correctly, they do have, you know, they review the mayor's budget proposal for the LPD. So, that's one of the main things that they do. And then the other thing is just, again, along with the more of the same, the general police commissioners board, as well as the committee or the complaint committee, I believe, actually has the power to carry out its own investigations, can even talk to witnesses when it comes to like complaints, you know, within the LPD. It can also ask its own independent investigator to look into police complaints. But I literally could not find anything recent, if any time, that that has actually ever happened. And that is very concerning, that that's literally just never been a thing in the history of anything. And I stand corrected if that has happened, but I literally could not find a time where either of those options were utilized. Oh, I also am very against the no parking between 2:00 and 5:00. It's absurd. And charging people to park, it disproportionately affects renters. Some people have no say with their parking situation. And if you have kids that drive, it makes it even worse. So, I'm all for abolishing that. Thank you.
Thank you. So, we are now through to the consent agenda.
The consent agenda, and I'm going to call on Councilmember Hussein to pull a few items first. Before we do that, I'll remind everybody, we're going to vote on everything that's not pulled as one item. And if you do want, if you want to vote no on something, please pull it from the consent agenda of Council, if Vice President Hussein doesn't do it. Otherwise, we lack consent, and we have to do it all over again. So, please make sure that the items you wish to vote no on are pulled from the consent agenda before we initiate the process of adopting the consent agenda. Council Vice President Hussein.
Sure, I appreciate that. And I tried to pay attention, obviously, during Committee of the Whole. And I believe the appointments that folks wanted to see pulled would be 4B, which is the confirmation of a reappointment for Clyde D. Carnegie, as a fourth ward member of the Board of Police Commission for a term to expire June 30 of 2024. 4E, which is a confirmation appointment. Tracy Thomas is an at-large member of the Board of Water and Light Board of Commissioners for a term to expire June 30th, 2024. And 4F, which is a confirmation of a reappointment for Sandra Zirkle, is a fourth ward member of the Board of Water and Light Board of Commissioners for a term to expire June 30 of 2024. And then 4D, Rodney Singleton was not able to be with us today during Committee of the Whole. So, we are going to reach out and try to reschedule for a couple of weeks from now. So, that also will not be part of the consent agenda. That being said, and I don't know if we want to...
Before we move it, let me open it up to the council. So, Councilmember Spitsy, is there something you wish to pull from the consent agenda?
I do not. I do not want to pull anything from the consent agenda. I just wanted to briefly mention, because there was comment about being on these boards and commissions. And it's something that I know not only I have, but other council members have stressed. There's an application process on our website, you know, and we encourage people to do that, to look at. There are myriad of boards and commissions that are available. And if you want to be a part of the process, I urge you to apply. If you've applied, let someone know that you've applied. Those applications are vetted through the mayor's office. But sometimes he listens to us every once in a while. And so, you know, if you've applied, let us know. Let a council person know. So, I encourage you to look on there and look at a board or commission. And that's basically the process, is you fill out an application, you indicate which, you know, I think you have three choices, three or four choices of what you want. It goes to the mayor's office, it's vetted, he makes a recommendation. That's the process in a nutshell. But, again, if you've done that, and you're really interested in serving, let a council member know. Thank you for your indulgence, Mr. President.
Of course. Councilmember Betts?
I'm just wondering if we could pull the tribute for Ms. Latham, so that I can say...
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Item 1A, Mr. Clerk. Mr. Jackson?
Thank you. Just the reappointment of Dr. Clyde Carnegie and the reappointments of Tracy Thomas and Sandra Zirkle.
Thank you. I thought for sure, in the interest of a very long meeting, we should probably specifically call out the wind one. But since we've all been talking so much, there might be enough wind to celebrate in our own right. So, we'll keep that going. So, Vice President Hussein, if you'd like to move the altered consent agenda, I would appreciate it.
Sure, I would move the consent agenda to include 1B, which is Tribute and Recognition of America Wind Energy Association. 2A, which is a confirmation of appointment for Annie Abukar as a member of the South Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard Corridor Improvement Authority. 2B, which is a confirmation of appointment for Alexis Carnegie Dunham as a member of the South Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard Corridor Improvement Authority Board. 2C, which is a confirmation of appointment for Don Musobr as a member of the South Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard Corridor Improvement Authority. Let's see, sorry. 2D, which is confirmation of appointment for Nikki Solden as a regional business owner representative, member, sorry, of the South Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard Corridor Improvement Authority. 3A, which is a confirmation of appointment for Ronald Wilson as an at-large member of the Board of Public Service. 3B, which is a confirmation of appointment for Jennifer Poplar as an at-large member of the Park Board for a term ending June 30 of 2024. 3C, which is a confirmation of appointment for Brian M. Daniels as an at-large member of the Park Board. And then when we get into the fours from Committee of the Whole. 4A, which is the confirmation of reappointment for Larry Leatherwood as an at-large member of the Lansing Entertainment and Public Facilities Authority. 4C, which is a confirmation of reappointment for Georgina Gina Nelson as the fourth ward member of the Board of Fire Commissioners. 4G, which is a confirmation of reappointment for John Cron as an at-large member of the Board of Public Services for a term to expire June 30 of 2024. With that said, I would move the consent agenda.
Thank you. It's been moved, there is no discussion on a consent agenda. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Betts?
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar?
Yeah.
Councilmember Garza?
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor?
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley?
Yes.
Councilmember Wood?
Yes.
8A's, 0As, the consent agenda, I think our largest one ever. And that takes us back to the tribute for Florence Latham.
Councilmember Betts?
Thank you for allowing me to pull this from the consent agenda. Ms. Latham, the reason this came up is a neighbor of hers contacted me and said, hey, this is somebody who's an elder in our neighborhood, and somebody who would be excited to be receiving some respect from council and some notice that she's lived this long. Florence was born on August 22, 1918. That makes her 102 years old. She's been around for a really long time. Moved to Lansing in 1945, and has been living on Hayford since then, believe it or not. It's a very long time. She was hired as a housekeeper at the Hotel Olds, which is now known as the George W. Romney Building. And her birthday is coming up on August 22. So, I just want to say happy birthday. And now, I would make the motion to approve this resolution or this tribute.
Thank you, Councilmember Betts. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Jackson, your hand is up. Nope, okay. Well, thank you. Happy birthday to Ms. Latham. That's, you know, quite the accomplishment there. So, if we could please call the roll, Mr. Clerk.
On the tribute, Councilmember Betts?
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar?
Yes.
Councilmember Garza?
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor?
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley?
Yes.
Councilmember Wood?
Yes.
8A's, 0As, that resolution is adopted. So, let's go ahead and go back to the Committee of the Whole for the items we pulled from the consent agenda.
Right, the first item, I believe, Mr. Clerk, is the...
Clyde Carnegie.
Carnegie, yes. Yes. Would Councilmember Hussein, if you'd like to make the motion, get it in front of us, and then we'll open it up for discussion?
Sure. So, we did have, just very quickly, we did have Dr. Carnegie before us during Committee of the Whole to discuss a little bit about, you know, his work in the community, as well as his work with the Lansing Police Department. Just very quickly, before I move the resolution, I talked a little bit about his time as a longtime pastor at Friendship Baptist Church, the fact that he's been a chaplain with the Lansing Police Department for 23 years. Everyone knows he's a longtime educator within the Lansing School District. He served some 22, 23 years as principal of Sexton High School. He's also a longtime member of the Police Board of Commissioners. I think his time started back in 2004. He discussed a little bit about his desire to continue to move the department forward and tackle some of the issues that are before us today, particularly as they pertain to racial justice, equity, and the like. He also discussed the hiring process at length, and need to continue really to work to ensure that we're getting the best of the best, and that we're ensuring that the diversity within the police department reflects the diversity within our city. There was a lot of discussion on the discipline process, you know, with regards to the internal affairs process, obviously. The citizen commissioner, the chief's role in that. And then there was a lot of discussion as well about the accessibility of that board and moving maybe those meetings out of the second floor of City Hall, and making sure that their work is transparent, that they're engaged in the community. So, that being said, I know there will be quite a few comments and deliberations. So, I would, at this point, to allow for that, move the resolution for Clyde D. Carnegie as a fourth ward member to the Police Board of Commissioners, and this would be for a term to expire June 30 of 2024.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Councilmember Spitzley?
Thank you, Mr. President. I am going to support the reappointment of Dr. Carnegie. However, Dr. Carnegie made several points. The point, one of the points that I thought was important was that there are three additional board members that are coming up. And I am urging the administration to be very thoughtful in the next round of appointments. Dr. Carnegie, as he stated, is one of the senior members of the police commission. His knowledge of the budget process is amazing, and I think would serve the incoming board members and the board members that have only been on there one or two years well. And so, I think that, you know, there's a balance here with institutional knowledge, but also looking forward to the future of bringing in new people, new people with fresh perspectives to come on to the commission to affect the change that we need and that we are demanding in this community. And so, with that, I just wanted to let everybody know that I would be supporting his appointment, but also kind of putting the administration on notice, that I think that they need to think outside of the box when they are looking for appointing the next three. There are three positions open, I think, Dr. Carnegie said. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Spitzley. Councilmember Jackson?
Thank you, Mr. President. So, this was a very, and still is a very challenging decision for me. Dr. Carnegie, again, he was my principal at Sexton High School. I have so much respect for him. He's been a pastor. He's served the community in so many different ways, and including been on the Lansing Commission, Police Department Commission Board for, since 2004. We had a great conversation in Committee of the Whole, and I kind of went back and forth on my decision. But, you know, just going with my heart here, and some of the things that, you know... But, um, you know, just going with my heart here and some of the things that, you know, Mr. Dr. Carnegie said are great. For example, he said that he wants to see total review of all police policies. And he said, since his time there, they have not reviewed it thoroughly and that there is a committee that does policy that's kind of vacant right now. And he also said that he wants to see transparency in all complete police complaints. And I don't know if Attorney Jim Smirker is going to say something, but I definitely would support that 100% because when people do complain or have concerns of possible misconduct or if they think something was wrong and they're not sure, they should have follow up and know how it was handled. And that's one of the things we would like to see. He also said that he wants to report to council regularly or at least soon and tell us all the things that he's doing, which I think is great. He also said that he wants to have the commissioners go out into the public this way. Go out to the public and be with people, which is great. However, the only problem I have is that he's had, basically since 2004, to do all these things. And I understand the board makeup is changing and that there's vacancies. And I know he's going to pass today and I'm still doing this kind of to make a statement that, you know, times are changing and new ideas should be interjected. Dr. Carnegie has some new ideas that he wants to roll out and I look forward to him doing that. He advised us that he is going to be the senior leader on the commission because some senior people resigned and now it's basically his turn. And I hope that he champions all the things that he mentioned. And maybe out of all the things Dr. Carnegie is known for, maybe his greatest chapter has yet to be written and this is it. The one police commissioner for a local city police department that pushed for reform and that thought outside the box. But, you know, just, I'm probably just still going to vote no, only because I just want to make a statement out there to the administration that these are very important and that not everybody's going to make it, thank you.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Thank you, I, I have the utmost respect for the work that Mr. Carnegie has done in the past and his role at Sexton High School. I have, this is not a personal thing, but I will say, I mean, we know from committee, I voted no on this. And, and part of the, my reasoning, not just we need to have a change, but I, I asked some very direct questions about whether or not there was ever any opportunity with the commission to act on citizen complaints, to make policy recommendations based on complaints. And the response was no. And that may be because that's what they assume their role is at this point in time. But I, I want somebody on the commission and moving forward on the commission, and I guess this is notice to everybody else on the commission, that actively looks at their role as an advisor as more than a stamp and looks at the policies, not just moving forward. I, I would, I would like to, I would be more inclined to vote for him if I saw evidence that he had tried to do any of these things in the past and, and not just, obviously, the words for today are relevant to the issues right now. But I didn't, I didn't see an understanding of the, the issues that were brought forward about citizen complaints and defunding and redirecting resources. And I understand that this is going to pass today. And again, mine is a, mine is a vote that is, is a statement. But I, I, I hope moving forward that we take this seriously and look at putting folks on boards that do challenge the status quo and an attempt to work on behalf of all citizens.
Thank you, and whoever has their, their video game or whatever, sound like, sound like my grandfather here, but if you could turn down the Nintendo, that would be awesome, it's, it's blinging in our, in our ears. And I just, thank you, Councilmember Dunbar, I very much appreciate your comments. And I want to say too, that I struggled with this appointment, not because I don't think that Dr. Carnegie is qualified for this board or commission, but because I have heard a desire from our residents for some new perspectives to be showcased on the Police Board of Commissioners. So I am looking to the mayor, and I know he's already begun this because we have a representative in front of the Committee on Public Servi- Public Safety, excuse me, who is a new member of the Police Board of Commissioners, DA Jones. And then I know that the mayor will be sending over two other vacancies for the first and the third ward. So I am going to vote yes on Dr. Carnegie because my, my role here is to advise. And my advice is we need some new folks on the commission, but I also think that Dr. Carnegie is qualified for this position. And I have no qualms about voting yes, particularly in the context that three new members will be joining the ranks of Police Board of Commissioners very soon. So I do see Councilmember Hussein's up and then we will, we will call this for a vote.
Sure, and I'll be very brief. I first wanted to talk a little bit about Councilwoman Spitz's comments, she's absolutely correct. In that we, you know, we have this, this board, you know, commission structure, this, this system, if you will. These positions are incredibly important and we need a robust amount of applicants. And we, as councilmembers, I think, play a key role in that. And then so we need to be, you know, make sure that we are being as transparent as possible about, yeah, the application process, where the vacancies exist. We need to be obviously using our networks, vehicles such as social media to get the word out, listservs, things of that nature. And then, and then also a little bit about the process, you know, where, where the mayor vets and then sends to council. Although that process is driven by charter and ordinance, there's nothing that prohibits the mayor from sending over his, you know, his, his recommended appointment, but also all the applications of the individuals that vet, were vetted and actually qualified or, or would be qualified for that position based on, you know, taxes, based on criminal records, based on, you know, those types of things that the charter calls for. So I wonder if, you know, we all need bigger packets to read, right? But I wonder if, you know, the mayor could not begin to send over all qualified applicants that actually applied and then obviously, you know, recommend one of those to us. But I think that would help us in our vetting process. With regards to Dr. Carnegie, you know, there were some things that were concerning, but there were also some things that were impressive about that particular interview. And there were a number of issues that, you know, he talked about, whether that be diversity within the police department, whether that be, you know, making sure that we're on the cutting edge of policies and procedures and we're implementing those, making sure that the Police Board of Commissioners is accessible and getting them out of City Hall. And now it's our responsibility, I think, if we do vote this up as councilmembers, to hold him accountable as a people's representative on that board, but also the individuals that are part of our community and are truly the, you know, the bosses, if you will. So, so I, you know, I will be supporting this for myriad of reasons. We talked a little bit about that at Committee of the Whole, but I will also work to, to hold Dr. Carnegie accountable, just like, to be honest with you, he has held me accountable on a few issues as a city council member and I also ask that the, the public do the same. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk, correct me if I'm wrong, but there is a motion before us on this resolution.
Yes, there is.
Okay, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Betts.
No.
Councilmember Dunbar.
No.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
No.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
I'm sorry, was that a yes?
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Five yeas, three nays, the resolution is adopted. And that takes us to the reappointment of Tracy Thomas.
Sure, before we do that, I would just like to warn everybody that if the power goes out in the city of Lansing right now, because we're expecting about 80 mile an hour winds, we'll just resume this if we can. If not, we will, we'll pick up the meeting some other time.
I think we can recess for a certain period of time without re-noticing the, the meeting.
All right, well, whatever that period of time is, we'll be recessed for that period of time. Then we'll come back.
All right.
Mr. Vice President, if you please make the motion.
Sure, so very quickly, we did have Tracy Thomas into Committee of the Whole to discuss his candidacy as well as his time on the Board of Commissioners. Tracy is a longtime educator, he has served as a teacher and a principal over the course of 30 plus years. He also has served up to this point, three terms on the Lansing Board of Water and Light Board of Commissioners for a total of 12 years. He talked a little bit about the fact that he has served as chair of several of the committees, has actually served on every committee of the board and that he is the current vice chair of the Board of Water and Light Board of Commissioners. He also talked a little bit about taking a leadership role and supporting the, I hope I get this right, the high school first step in college internship program and that he has worked diligently to ensure that local students, you know, within some of our local high schools understand that there are employment opportunities, incredible employment opportunities, to be candid, with the Lansing Board of Water and Light. He also discussed the importance of continuing to move the dial with making Lansing Board of Water and Light a cleaner, sorry, greener, cleaner utility while also ensuring affordability and sustainability. That being said, there were a number of questions, a number of comments. So I know that folks have some things that they want to discuss and to allow for that to happen. I will move the resolution of reappointment for Tracy Thomas as an at-large member of the Board of Water and Light Board of Commissioners. And this would be for a term to expire June 30th of 2024.
Great, is there any discussion? Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you, just want to kind of explain my vote here. This is another very tough one. Tracy Thomas is a great person, a great background, committed to serving. Open, bumped into him on Friday on his bicycle, had a great discussion. And he even, you know, explained to me then and now that he's a learner and wants to, he has more time to dive into certain areas. But again, this vote is, is very difficult and it's nothing personal. It's just that, in my opinion, the Board Water and Lights Board is made up of, of smart, rational people that, I don't know, seem to think generally alike when it comes to decisions. And I just don't know who is the person in that board making the push for renewables, challenging the status quo of, well, if it's not sunny and it's not windy, then we can't have energy. And what are we going to do? I just want that there to be a person in there that's asking for the next option, trying to find the biggest in-between. And there, there was also qualified people that applied for this position and not just, no offense to the people that's running for reappointment or asked to be reappointed, but there are some people that I think would change at least some of the direction and views of Board Water and Light, that person being Rebecca Payne, for example. And that's why I won't be supporting these nominations, thank you.
Councilmember Jackson, thank you very much, Councilmember Dunbar.
Thank you, again, I'm, I'm going to echo what Councilmember Jackson said. I love Mr. Thomas. I just, I really want something, I want new energy on that board. And, and just like Councilmember Jackson was saying, there are people in the wings. I know Sarah Malkoff has also applied to be on that board. And although I'm sure that this is going to pass this time, I really want us to keep in mind that when the opportunity arises, I would really like to put new blood on the board.
Thank you, Councilmember Dunbar. I think that does it, so if we could please call the roll, Mr. Clerk. Mr. Clerk, you're muted. Still muted. There you are.
All right, okay, on the appointment of Tracy Thomas, Councilmember Betts.
No.
Councilmember Dunbar.
No.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
No.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes, yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Five yeas, three nays, the resolution is adopted. And that takes us to the reappointment of Sandra Zerco.
What's your name, Vice President Hussein?
No problem, um, so we also had Ms. Zerco into Committee of the Whole today. We had a, an extensive conversation with her. She outlined her 25 years of service at AT&amp;T, her 30 years of service for the AFL-CIO. And she talked a little bit about her time as a longtime commissioner on the Board of Water and Light. She spoke during the vetting process about the importance of experience as the board, you know, welcomes new members. Obviously, we've talked about that subsequent, you know, prior regarding Mr. Thomas's appointment. And, and really the importance of them kind of coalescing to, you know, to work to tackle serious issues, not the least of working toward, you know, reducing carbon emissions while maintaining affordability and sustainability. She did discuss the fact that she had served on all board committees and has served in positions of leadership on many of those committees. And, and again, she discussed at length the board and its role in being really good stewards of the climate. That included, or she, she referenced accomplishments of the board. I think specifically she discussed the fact that the board would be coal-free by 2025. She also talked about some of the challenges to going to 100% renewable energy when considering limitations with regards to battery technology, connectivity and grid issues, nimbyism when we talk about wind farms, things of that nature. That being said, I would move at this point the resolution of the reappointment for Sandra Zerco as a fourth ward member to the Board of Water and Light Board of Commissioners. This would be for a term to expire June 30th of 2024.
Councilmember Betts.
Yeah, I, thank you, President Spatafor. I want to echo what everybody said about the other commissioner and this commissioner, the same reason I think that we all stand with this. But I, I do want to address, you know, I, I, I expect our mayor to approach council about these things before the government's. We have all known about these issues and that we need newer blood and that we need people who are focused on climate change in particular and on producing more renewables. And the board, up to this point, hasn't shown that. And so when it comes to the Board of Police Commissioners, when it comes to the Board of Water and Light, when it comes to of all these, what I'm asking is, you know, I want to see all eight of us vote yes on these things. And I think what the mayor needs to do from now on is to be more transparent about these instead of just throwing them in front of us in cow. I want to be able to have a conversation and I want especially the mayor to listen to the people who are out there calling for new blood in these things. This is not coming from Kathy Dunbar, this is not coming from Brian Jackson, this is not coming from me. This is coming from people in our community who have come to us and discussed with us, very particularly that we need this change on the board. And so I, I think that's my comment, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Betts. Looks like that's it, Mr. Clerk, if you please call the roll. He is frozen, it appears. Must be using dial-up, maybe AOL. Yeah, could you please call the roll and then just report back to the clerk's office?
Councilmember Hussein?
Yes.
Councilmember Wood?
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley?
Yes.
Councilmember Betts?
No.
Councilmember Jackson?
No.
Councilmember Garza?
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar? Councilmember Dunbar, I'm sorry.
I said no, sorry.
Councilmember Spatafor?
Yes.
Motion carries five, three.
Mr. Clerk, did you get that?
I did, thank you, and thank you for motoring on without me.
We, we got to get here before the storm knocks us out.
Yeah, I just heard a pretty, pretty loud thunder, so we're in trouble. We are to resolutions for action by the Committee on Development and Plan, we have Act One of 2020.
Councilmember Spitzley, this one's you today.
Thank you, Mr. President. What we have before us is a vacation of a road on Jerome Street and Home Street. It's a right-of-way vacation that is being requested by Sparrow Health Systems. It is actually, to be specific, it is North Homes between Jerome and Michigan and then, and north and east of Sparrow Hospital, I'm, I'm sorry, it's North Homes between Jerome Street and Michigan. Sparrow Hospital owns property on both sides of Jerome Street. They just recently closed on the former Goodyear property. One of the, one of the questions and concerns was whether or not the residents will still have access to Pennsylvania Avenue once that's vacated. And it is still part of the non-motorized plan, so that at this point, the residents will still have access. And it is still part of the non-motorized plan, so that at this point, the residents will still have access. Sparrow Hospital does not have any expansion plans as of yet, but wanted to have this vacation process done to clear the way for future development. And with that, I would move the resolution.
Thank you, Councilmember Spitzley. Other questions about this? I have a question if others don't. It was a bit unclear to me. I wasn't in the committee, so I apologize. I don't apologize. I wasn't there. So they're vacating all the way to Penn. Does that mean that, you said they will have, the residents will still have access to get off?
At this point, they will still have access. Andy Kilpatrick characterized it as their, it is still part, that area on the sidewalks are still part of a non-motorized plan, City of Lansing plan. And so the residents will still have access. It won't be cut off so that they don't have access to Pennsylvania Avenue.
They will still have access to?
Yes, they will. I'm sorry. Yes, they will.
Very good. Thank you. Councilmember Wood?
Thank you, President Spatafor. Just to talk a little bit further on that, it sounds like they'll have, from what you're saying, Councilmember Spitzley, is that they will have bike or walkability, but will they have vehicle access?
That does not sound like they will have vehicle access. It's non-motorized.
Okay. Just, just so that we're clear on that.
Yes.
So they'll be able to walk, they'll be able to bike, but they will not be able to drive?
That's correct.
All right. Thank you.
That is my understanding, yes.
Okay, are there other questions? What is the, what's the goal here?
They, they don't have a goal. They don't really have a redevelopment plan yet. But, you know, they're growing by leaps and bounds over there, and they own all the property over in that area. And so, you know, they wanted to just have the, they wanted to vacate the road to clear the way for future redevelopment. Now, once that future redevelopment comes up and they bring it forth to, you know, council or to the administration, they committed to working okay?
This is me.
Well, I don't know what that is.
It's me showing the map. We're talking about this part of the street. There is no residence on that part.
Oh, I just see, I just see your surface. I don't see a map.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So I don't know what that is.
Anyway, go ahead. Sorry. I was trying to pull up the map, but there are no residents on that portion.
Right. And so, right, but they said that in the event that there, and I don't think it's residents on Jerome Street. I think it's residents that would access Jerome Street to get to Pennsylvania. And so they said in the, can you bring that back?
Well, I'm afraid to now. Hold on.
In the event that there is, when they do have redevelopment plans, they will, they just said they will work and commit to working with the city to try to ensure that there will be still walkability and access to Pennsylvania.
You can see that map there, Patricia?
Nope.
Okay.
Am I the only one that can't see that map? Because I just want to be sure.
I don't know.
I don't know either.
Okay, let's move on. So any questions for Councilmember Spitzley?
Oh, gosh, what happened here?
Okay. Mr. Clerk, would you please call the roll on the resolution?
Okay, on Act One of 2020, Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Eight yeas, zero nays, the resolution is adopted, and that takes us to Act Two of 2020.
Councilmember Spitzley?
Yeah, and Mr. President, just for the record, that was me because I pushed some crazy button, so sorry.
Okay.
Apparently, I was the only one that didn't see the map. So what we have before us is Act Two, 2020. It's the sanitary sewer easement acquisition request by the City of Lansing. This is part of our Continued CSO Control Program. It's a new gravity sewer cut corner on the property. It's, the easement is 400 square feet, and the property is currently owned by the land bank. They will not be charging us for the easement, and it will not affect future development on this property. It looks, and according to Public Services Department, they're setting up the project also for future bridge rehabilitation. And with that, I move the resolution.
All right, the motion is?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. It's at 1506 North Grand River. I wanted to make sure.
Yeah, and that's the old Sprite Plant, no? Seven-Up?
Oh.
Doesn't matter. It's that distributing plant across the river.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Well, okay. Um, any questions or comments for Councilmember Spitzley? Very good. Councilmember Spitzley has moved the resolution. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
On Act Two of 2020, Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Okay, the eight yeas, zero nays, the resolution is adopted. We are to the Committee on Public Services, a resolution to change the name of City Market Riverfront Drive.
Councilmember Dunbar, you're up.
Trying to scroll through my agenda to find the appropriate spot, but this pretty much says it. We are renaming City Market Drive to Riverfront Drive, and the only address that's affected is the, the building where the City Market was. So all the other related buildings in the area, the Lansing Center, the housing, et cetera, is on Cedar Street or Michigan, so that is the only address affected, and I would move it.
Thank you. It's been moved by Councilmember Dunbar. Councilmember Betts?
Thank you, Mr. President. I only want to bring up one thing because a constituent called me today who lives in Riverfront, who is a bit worried that there might be some confusion between Riverfront Towers, Riverfront Apartments, and Riverfront Street, which are not attached to each other. He was afraid that somebody might get lost in the process. I just wanted to express that for the council before we vote on it.
Okay.
Thank you. Other questions or concerns? All right, the final death nail in the City Market is before us. Would the Clerk please call the roll?
On the renaming, Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Fair, why not?
Councilmember Spatafor.
I agree with Councilmember Jackson, yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Eight yeas, zero nays, the resolution is adopted, and we are to the, setting a public hearing for the snow and ice special assess.
Councilmember Dunbar?
Yep, this is, this is part of the public improvement. Oh, it's not a public improvement. Let me take that back. We have to set a public hearing in order to finalize the role for snow and ice assessments, and we need to do it on a pretty tight timeline so that we can get this to the assessor in time to get on the winter taxes so that they don't have to wait a year before they see what happened, the assessments from the prior year. So these costs were incurred between December 1st, 2019, and April 30th, 2020. The total is $3,777, and these are the assessments to the property owners for whom we had to go out and clear snow and ice over the winter. So we just want to set the public hearing for, oh, where is the date on this?
I think it's the 24th of this month.
Thank you, because it's not, I'm not seeing it in my supporting, so 24th of this month, so.
Yep. And I'll just note too, for council's edification, the reason it's coming to us so late in the year, we like to get these on the summer taxes generally, but with COVID-19 and all that, there was a little bit of delay in getting that to council. So it will be on the winter taxes, which may present some confusion for folks because it looks like they're being pre-built for sidewalk work that they didn't need, but it actually is from the 1920s winter, and relatively low this year, it looks like, so that's not surprising.
Nineteen, oh, you mean 1920. I'm thinking 1920, like 100 years ago.
Just after the last pandemic.
Got you, got you.
All right, so setting the public hearing, August 24th, 7:00 PM, and the Zoom link will be sent out with the notice, as well as an opportunity for folks to appeal it in writing. So without any further delay, would the Clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Okay, eight yeas, zero nays, the resolution is adopted, and that takes us to setting the public hearing for the Glenburn Commons Assessment.
Councilmember Dunbar?
Thank you. This is an assessment that we do in southwest Lansing, in the middle of the Glenburn neighborhood. Just as recap, it was originally built as a sort of single-family condominiumized development, and there's a big central area in the middle of it that was the responsibility of this association. And then, as we heard in committee, apparently the treasurer ran off with the president and the whole bag of money back in I don't know what year, and so the association sort of dissolved. But there's this parkland area in the middle that needs to be mowed. And so what, the decision has been made, and it's been renewed several times since then, is that the city would take care of contracting out the mowing of that area to keep it nice and neat for the neighbors, but then we assess back the costs for that. And this past year, the cost was $24,341 divided among all of the property owners that benefit from it. It's like $53, $53.97 for the year. So we're having a public hearing on that before we put it on the roll.
It's one of the only neighborhood associations who get to appeal their HOE fees right to the city council. So we're, thank you for that, Councilmember Dunbar. Any further questions? This public hearing will also be the 24th via Zoom, and that notice will go out this week. Would the Clerk please call the roll?
Okay, I'm starting the hearing on the assessment. Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Eight yeas, zero nays, the resolution is adopted, and that takes us to the Committee on Ways and Means for the, that takes us to the order of reports from council committees by the Committee on Ways and Means for a report on the police department budget.
Councilmember Wood?
Thank you, President Spatafor. I don't know if the Clerk or Sherri has the document that they can put up on the screen or not.
I may have it handy. Hold on.
Okay. We'd be looking at
Sorry, folks.
Four and five.
Sorry, I think I have the old version. Let me see if I can find it from Sherri. Sherri, do you have it by chance? They're usually faster than me.
I do.
You do? Okay. Do you want to share your screen? Once you get it uploaded? Thank you.
And Sherri, if we could have it go to page four and five. Thank you. Thank you. The Committee on Ways and Means, after hearing a number of concerns from the public about the police budget, asked the Chief Strategy Officer to do a deep dive into the budget and to come back with a report to us. I also believe on the line, we should have Julie Keeler and our chief, Darryl Green, who's on here. The information that was provided to us is a breakdown of the budget. And if you, it also looks at the final for FY19, the adopted budget for FY20, because we don't have the final numbers on that, even though closing was on June 30th. And then we have the adopted budget of FY21. When we take a look at the budget, well, if you look down here under Personnel and Salaries, you'll see that 39% of the budget is made up of salaries, and that's over $18 million that we have in salaries. Also, the next largest number that we deal with is legacy cost, and that is 16 million or 36% of the budget. Legacy costs include police pension, retiree healthcare, miscellaneous, and workers' comp. The next line, which is the variable fringes, which are for current employees, healthcare, and other things that are part of that, is 3 million, which is 7%. I'm not sure how many of you are aware, when we're looking at these expenses, first of all, police and fire do not collect social security. That is part of a state statute where our other employees, whether we're talking about our Teamsters or UAW, they are able to collect a pension plus their social security. If for some reason, after they retire from the police or fire department, they have to work to get the quarters and to collect social security. Up here at the top, we talk about the revenues that are generated. We have property tax, income tax, state revenues, license and permits, return on equity payments, and then we have the dedicated mills and fees. These are all part of the dollars that come out of our general fund. If you go to page five, Sherri? Thank you. Also, in looking at expenses, one of the things that we looked at are expenses that are something that we have to have in order to have the police department function. And this expense line, which is $7,466,000, we have vehicle fuel, which is paid out of that. We have contractual services, which are $357,000. Of that 357,000, approximately 300,000 is for crossing guards, which we contract with, which were required by the state to fulfill that obligation. We have information technology during the budget. We've talked about this numerous times. Each employee, as well as every computer we have, there is a charge that is charged back to information technology. That's $2,412,000. Utilities that are charged for both the central police station downtown, as well as the one on Wise Road, is $432,000. We also have communication and phones, which is $200,000. We also have communication and phones, which is two hundred and forty-one thousand. We have the building rent for Wise Road, which is a hundred and twenty-five thousand. We've also discussed before that under equipment rental, this is renting the police cars back so that they're able to have police vehicles. That's one million five hundred thousand dollars. Repair and maintenance is two hundred and fifty-one thousand. Then there's our bonds and insurance, which is another three hundred and fifty-seven thousand. And then finally, this equipment line has to do with replacements of uniforms, duty belts, vests, handcuffs, boots, and other protective gear. And that's two hundred and sixty-two thousand. Then you see the special revenue numbers that are here. Currently, the police department, police and fire have seven hundred and fifty-two police and fire retirees that they're paying pensions out to. Of that, in June, the money that is in the retirement fund that is earning dollars based on investments was three hundred and, three hundred and eighteen million six hundred and sixty-five dollars, six hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. On a monthly basis, we send out checks of approximately two million eight hundred and fifty-five thousand, six hundred and thirty-three dollars for retirement assets that go out. Legacy costs, again, are part of a general fund contribution that has to be paid as part of our obligation. We also are in a three-year contract with the police department, which was negotiated through the mayor's office, ratified through the police department, and was approved by council. I know that Councilmember Spitzley is going to go into more information on this when she has her committee meeting. Also in this document, if you scroll to the next page, Sherri, we have the count of how many personnel that we have that are civilian and sworn officers and total personnel. There was some restructuring in between 2019 and 2020. So you can see those criminal divisions that are there. Again, you see the budget for that. You see how much of it is legacy cost. And then our final page on this talks about, yeah, that one, thank you, Sherri, is the general fund revenues, how those play into the police budget. And unless Councilmember or President Spatafor has anything to add to this, we appreciate all the work that Judy did with this and putting this together to have us have a better idea of what we're talking about when we're looking at the police budget and what is actually, what actual revenues that we have to work with. And as I said, I believe the chief is on here as well as Judy and could answer any questions that councilmembers might have.
I'll just add, Madam Chair, to that, that I think we try to hear some of the questions that were, that have been, that have been placed from the public on reallocation of resources. And I think one of the things that's been really important to me during this discussion is knowing what those numbers actually are. Right? If it's, if the police department budget is forty-seven million dollars, but really ten of it's discretionary, then there's not a lot we can do with, with, in terms of reimagined police and those types of things. So this is a very important first step, I think, maybe a little bureaucratic for some, but I think it's a really important first step in understanding, particularly as we dive into budgeting priorities for fiscal year 21, that we're starting to put together, those for the mayor and having this discussion on budget. So I really appreciate the work that Ms. Keeler put into it. Judy, I see you there. Thank you very much. Like those glasses, too. I don't think I've seen those ones yet. But I really appreciate that work, and I do hope that council takes a serious look at this and presents some questions, too, and maybe some ways to think about this differently. That's the reason why we sent it out to the full council. In addition to having this presentation was, we wanted to make sure that y'all had a chance to provide feedback and pushback, because this is not the first draft we saw. There was stuff that we forgot to have included or might have been missing. So it was a deliberative process in Ways and Means, and I hope that if there's stuff missing from this that y'all have a chance to weigh in with Ms. Keeler either tonight, before midnight, or over the next few weeks as we develop this. But I do know that Councilmember Spitzley, in her committee on Wednesday, Wednesday with Councilmember Dunbar and myself, will present this in a very thorough way and have a discussion on this as well. But I just wanted to thank you for the work and for the continual redrafting of this. And even as of like last week, Jake was answering questions from councilmembers, so I appreciate that very much. Are there other questions from councilmembers? I don't see hands at the moment. Councilmember Spitzley.
I'm sorry, I forgot I needed to do that formal raise your hand thing. But one of the things that I really appreciated was, you know, for me, as we're moving through my committee and we're looking at Councilmember Vets and Councilmember Dunbar's resolution is, and we'll have a discussion on this on Wednesday, but if the chief is on there, if the chief is on the line, if he can give us the number, you know, if we're looking at reductions, theoretically, a ten percent reduction in the police budget, what does that mean staffing-wise? Can he give us a number? Can he give us a number?
Councilmember Spitzley, Chief Green's not on the phone, not on the line right now. When we did alert the administration for the folks we needed online, we just mentioned Judy, so.
Okay, that's.
If we want to talk to the chief, we can have him back, but tonight he's not prepared.
If Ms. Keeler doesn't know the answer, we'll, I'll, you know, I think it, I think it is about a hundred. I think it's about a hundred police officers, is what I thought. Is that, is that what you recall, Ms. Keeler?
I apologize. Would you restate what you asked?
I said, I think it was, I'm going to stop. I remember the chief gave a presentation about how many staff members that a ten percent reduction would be, and I don't remember the number.
Okay. I thought it was twenty-nine or something.
Twenty-nine. See, there you go. Yeah. I said a hundred, so I'm going to stop, so. But I am going to have that number on Wednesday.
The mayor appears to be, Andy, are you?
Yeah, so for council, at the, at the meeting we had on Wednesday that Judy and Joe McClure ran, I think Judy, remind me if I'm wrong, I think Joe said it was about an average hundred and sixty thousand dollars per police officer.
Oh, there you go.
In terms of police and car and equipment, one police officer on average costs about a hundred and sixty thousand. So I think you can kind of do the math from there. Judy, did I get that right? Thank you.
All right, that's where the hundred came from, I think. All righty, it's late.
Councilmember Wood, your hand went down. Are you, are you all set?
The mayor gave the number that I was going to give, so.
So that hundred and sixty, Mr. Mayor, that's pension, that's variable fringe, that's IT, that's car, that's training?
Yeah, Joe didn't mention if it was pension and healthcare. I think it is, but I'm not a hundred percent sure. But I know it was all current costs, so salary, IT, training, car, vest, gun. So I think it's all current costs. I don't know, I don't believe that is encompassing, but I don't, that's a good question to ask on Wednesday when Joe and Judy are at Councilwoman Spitzley's committee, because I don't think that pension and healthcare was mentioned as part of that. I think that's a separate cost, but I'm not a hundred percent sure of that.
Jake's turning on his camera, so I think Jake's about to tell us what.
Okay, Jake probably knows better than I do.
Yeah, pulling it up, I believe the one hundred twenty thousand does not include the retirement pension benefits. That includes the payroll, fringe benefits, the salary, gun allowance, car. But it doesn't include the legacy costs, which would remain constant whether or not we hired additional officers or reduced our police force, so at least in the short term, so.
All right, Jake, and you said one twenty, the mayor said one sixty, I said one sixty, Carol said one sixty. Is it one twenty or one sixty? I'm sorry.
One sixty, I think, might include legacy costs.
Okay, so that's good to know. The one sixty might be the legacy, okay. Other questions for Councilmember Wood or the assembled group here today? All right, thank you, Councilmember Wood. And as I said to folks, if you have things you want to dive a little bit deeper into, that is now the draft that's in front of council, so feel free to dig into that with Jake or Judy. And I thank them, I preemptively thank them for their time with us on this project, so.
I would move to place this report on file.
That is a proper motion. And Mr. Clerk, would you please call the roll? I'm sorry, does anyone wish to address the motion? All right, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
On the motion to place the report on file, Councilmember Vets.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar. Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yeah.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Eight yeas, zero nays, the motion is adopted. And now to the order of ordinances for introduction. Councilmember Dunbar introduced an ordinance of the city of Lansing, and this is from the Committee on Public Services. Councilmember Dunbar introduced an ordinance of the city of Lansing, Michigan to repeal Chapter 404, Section 404.01J, eliminate the prohibition on street parking in between 2:00 AM and 5:00 AM on any day. The ordinance is read a first time by its title and is referred to the Committee on Public Services.
Okay. I'm a little confused. I thought we were just setting the public hearing tonight.
Yes, I, I made it into the record and then she.
Got it, okay. My bad, sorry. We haven't, we haven't had a new one in a while, so I'm out of practice.
Your rules say I have to read it on introduction and passage.
All right, so it's, yes, Councilmember Dunbar.
Thank you. And actually, it is only mine because it's coming out of the Public Services Committee. So I'm going to defer to Councilmember Vets because this was his baby. And I will let him speak to, if that is allowable, Mr. President. Let Councilmember Vets.
It is, is a crazy night tonight. You can do it every now.
Yeah.
Councilmember Vets.
I was unprepared to speak for this, and I was excited for Kaffee to say something about it. These ordinances, this package of ordinances was written by, with the mayor's office and involved, the first one obviously repeals the two to five AM parking ordinance. The second one eliminates annual and temporary permits for overnight parking. And then the third one is one that the mayor and I negotiated. He said that particularly, he wanted to make sure that if there's a snow emergency that we can get cars off the streets and plow the roads. And so we're including that for the ordinance. I guess that this is just, we're setting a public hearing for this at this point. So Kaffee, I will let you do that.
So all three ordinances will need a public hearing on August 24th at 7:00 PM. We've already, we've already discussed them in the Committee on Public Service, so I will have, because Councilmember Dunbar, please pass, make the motion on the first one.
Yes, I hear, I move that we repeal the two to five, have a public hearing to repeal the two to five AM parking ordinance.
Very good. Councilmember Wood on the first ordinance or the package, whatever you're talking about today.
On the package, since I don't sit in the committee and haven't seen the minutes, was there any information passed out as to, you know, how this has worked so far, the number of tickets, the number of permits, any of those things?
Councilmember Dunbar.
I would say that was not a question that was asked.
That was not.
Thank you.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you. I see, I don't think there was a question asked, but I do believe that there was some comment that we didn't really have any numbers because it hasn't really been implemented because it's been such a short period of time. I thought I remembered that, but it's late, maybe.
Well, we also, we had COVID. We didn't have it very fully implemented. What we did talk about was quite a bit of the feedback we've received once notices and tickets have gone out. That did come up.
Yep, indeed, thank you.
And we did move it quickly out to, I mean, it hasn't moved quickly, actually. There is some confusion between the clerk's office, the attorney's office, and my office about whether these have been introduced or not, but they were introduced quite, quite a while ago before COVID-19 and referred to this committee months ago, just as a FYI to the council.
Right. Now, we didn't have committee meetings during COVID, so.
Correct, yeah.
Actively.
I think it was, these were the last ordinances we referred to a standing committee before we retreated into this, into the internet, so. Seeing no further questions, though, on this, let's call the roll on setting the public hearing for the first one.
Councilmember Vets.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yeah.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
No.
Eight yeas, or I'm sorry, seven yeas, one nay, the public hearing is set.
I think we need to do it twice more, right? Is that correct?
Yeah, but I have to read those into the record as well.
Go for it.
I was trying to bring up the correct one. Okay, Councilmember Dunbar introduced an ordinance of the city of Lansing, Michigan to repeal Chapter 404, Section 404.13, annual and temporary permits for overnight street parking. The ordinance was read a first time by its title and referred to the Committee on Public Services.
Councilmember Dunbar. Or Councilmember Vets.
Sorry.
I can defer, that's fine.
Councilmember Vets.
Sorry.
Yeah, I'll address it. So this basically eliminates the annual and temporary permit for overnight street parking in conjunction with the ban on two to five parking. This is setting the public hearing, though, for August 24th at 7:00 PM. Councilmember Dunbar has made the motion. It's been read into the record. There appear to be no other questions. Mr. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
On setting the hearing, Councilmember Vets.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
No.
Seven yeas, one nay, the public hearing is set. And we are to the third ordinance. Councilmember Dunbar introduced an ordinance of the city of Lansing, Michigan to amend Chapter 404 of the Lansing Codified Ordinances by adding Section 404.12 to provide for the declaration of snow emergency during and after weather events that will require salting and/or plowing of roadways to provide for how notice shall be given for snow emergencies, to prohibit parking in roadways during declared snow emergencies, and to provide for penalties for persons parking on the roadways during the.
Okay, now we're in some legal gray area. If he doesn't finish reading it, does it count, Mr.? Well, you got to unmute yourself, otherwise we don't even know the answer to the question about legal gray.
Somebody read it by title. That's all the rule says.
All right, so let me, all right, let me find it here.
He's going to be thrilled. That's the frozen image.
Yeah, he's not going to like that.
Very flattering. An ordinance of the city of Lansing, Michigan for the purpose of amending Chapter 404 of the Lansing Codified Ordinances by adding Section 404.12 to provide for the declaration of snow emergencies during and after weather events that will require salting and/or plowing of roadways to provide for how notice shall be given for snow emergencies, to prohibit parking in roadways during declared snow emergencies, and to provide for penalties for persons parking on the roadways during declared snow emergencies. Considered read for the first time. Councilmember Dunbar makes the motion to set the public hearing for August 24th, 2020. The clerk is. Councilmember Dunbar makes the motion to set the public hearing for August 24th, 2020, the clerk is back, so I'll turn it back to him to call the role.
On the hearing, Councilmember Batts.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
No.
Seven A's, one A, the resolution to set the public hearing is adopted.
All right, nobody sue me for that one, I read it officially, okay?
Okay. Oh, shoot, and we are to ordinances for passage, we have an ordinance of the city of Lansing, Michigan to amend the code of ordinances of the city of Lansing by adding a new section 884 for the purposes of providing for an extension of a service charge in lieu of taxes for 98 low-income elderly dwelling units in a project known as the Porter Senior Apartments pursuant to the provisions of the State Housing Development Authority Act of 1966 as amended. The ordinance was reported from the Committee on Development and Planning and is on the order of immediate passage.
Thank you, Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Mr. President, so what we have before us is a resolution to assess payment in lieu of taxes for the Porter Cedar Apartments. This pilot would be for four years, four D years, four zero, if I'm not mistaken. We, it's on June, let's see, we had a public hearing on this issue on April 27th, 2020, at which time we did have a presentation by the owners. Councilmembers asked a number of questions regarding this pilot, and those questions were provided back to us. The owners have owned this apartment complex, this apartment building for 15 years. They originally came to us, I think, in 2018 and wanted an extension of the existing pilot. That was, that request was withdrawn, and so now they're back and they want, for all purposes, a brand-new pilot. They want what's called a 5% pilot, and it says, let's see. For a 5% pilot, they are claiming to finance upgrades to the building. These upgrades are new appliances, new windows, they also have, they claim that they need a new boiler, or they say they want to replace the existing boiler. They said that it's very expensive to operate and it's old, it was just put in there before they bought the building 15 years ago, so it's 15 years old. We asked a number of things, we've had a history for the, of the Porter Building, we've had a number of history of some of the residents making some complaints, and so some of our council members were asking about, you know, when were the last rental inspections, asking for the number of calls of service, the last three years of the property. They also asked, and one of the questions and concerns were, what have they been doing with the profit that they've received from the pilot that they've had for the last 15 years? They, the owners talked about that they had received the Porter Apartments, they purchased it out of foreclosure. They gave us a list of improvements that they've done in the last 15 years. Let's see, there's a question of what, what would happen if the applicants do not get the pilot? And they, the owners said that if they can't get the pilot, the rehab project is not viable, and they were, they will forego the redevelopment, and which I'm interpreting means that they will not be putting any more money into the apartment building that they haven't put any money into for the past 15 years, anyway. Just making sure if there are any other questions here. So, so those questions were provided to us. Then, on June 22nd, the owners asked that council delay action after the public hearing, delay action on the pilot so that they could host more, host some council members. I mean, I know that, I think Councilmember Hussein went through the building, I also toured, and I think a couple other council members did as well. We then let them know that they would, on July 21st, I let them know that the the resolution will be placed on the council agenda for tonight. We apparently received on August 6th four letters from tenants in support of the pilot. And with that, Mr. President, I will move the resolution to open it up for discussion.
Resolution has been moved, other questions from comments, from council members? I don't have, I see, no, you can't answer a question, Patricia.
I can't answer the question, oh, I have a comment, since it's removed, right, okay, but other folks, okay?
Um, I have a question, and you mentioned some sort of guarantee, and I'm rereading the language here. What kind of mechanism is there to guarantee that this work is done? Because I have been pretty unimpressed with the previous experience at this property. I do think that this is something that, I don't want this to continue to be neglected, and I worry without the pilot that it will, but are there guarantees in that this work gets done, i.e. if it doesn't, the pilot is rescinded or things like that? How does that work?
Yeah, there is no guarantee, and that's kind of the problem. There is no guarantee, I mean, look at what it is now, I mean, they've had 15 years of a pilot, and they've done, they've done little to nothing, and, you know, the public comment saying that this is a no-brainer. Well, it was a no-brainer 15 years ago, too, and it wasn't done. It was a no-brainer when they came before us in 2018 wanting an extension of the pilot. So, and very little was done, and so there is no mechanism after they get the pilot that we can hold their feet to the fire to make sure that they do what they say they're gonna do, there just isn't. I look at it, and I guess these are gonna be my comments, I look at this as a covenant or kind of a trust agreement between us and the developer. Do we trust, and do we believe that the developer is going to do what they say they do? If we look back on the past 15 years, the answer is no. I don't believe that they're gonna do what they're saying they're gonna do, because they haven't done it, so.
Can I ask a follow-up, then? One question I have, it might be for law better to answer. I read through the ordinance and I see, you know, revocation for the pilot if prevailing wage isn't paid or other such, such things like remedies to problems on site. Why can't, you know, substantial renovations or improvements to the property be part of revocation on half of the city? Mr. Smarca.
First of all, if you look at the ordinance itself, is it going to be a federal mortgage loan that's going to be used for the renovations? Don Kapanic is in the audience.
Oh.
Perhaps he should address the documents, but they're gonna have to be guarantees with the feds to get that mortgage loan. It's gonna be a Mishna loan.
All right, I have made Don a presenter if he wants to speak up, but we will, Don will come, oh, you've unmuted, so let's do, let's call on Don, and then I do see council members Jackson and Garza have questions as well. Don, maybe you could specifically address the concerns that I've raised, and then if you've heard others that need to be addressed, please, please continue.
Yeah, I'm sorry, could you repeat your concern, I just wanna make sure I have it straight.
Yeah, so, you know, 15 years that this company has owned the Porter Senior Housing Apartments, we've seen, we've heard a number of complaints, there's been a lack of investment in the property, at least from our perspective, you know, maybe there's some stuff that's happened that we don't quite see or don't quite acknowledge, but it seems to have not been quite the deal that was hoped for when the pilot was written originally, and now the same company's asking for a 40-year extension. And while I would hope that, you know, while I wish that the past had been performed differently, the future is what I'm concerned about now, because we're talking about a 40-year exemption to all but 95% of their property taxes. What guarantees do we have, or why can't we write in the ordinance a guarantee that if the work is not completed under, much like a development agreement is done with a developer, that that pilot be revoked? What kind of guarantees do we have that this work will be done and that, and that the proceeds from a 95% pilot are not wasted, squandered?
Okay, I'll try to answer that. And I will say that the developer is supposed to be represented on this call as well tonight, I believe one of them spoke during public comments. But here goes. They, first of all, in terms of the document, this document is largely done to standards established by Mishna. And Mishna is very skittish about anything in one of these documents which in any way gives the city the ability to revoke the pilot. Because if in year, well, any year, year two or three or whatever it is, the city were to revoke the pilot, that would make the project not viable anymore, and that, when the project becomes not viable, that's a problem that largely falls back on Mishna's lap. So they have told us many, many times in the past, we can't put provisions, contingent provisions or provisions that would allow the city to revoke the pilot under those kinds of circumstances. Having said that, and I'm sure I don't have a perfect answer for your somewhat larger question, I believe that compliance is baked into the cake, if you will, they can't get the financing if they don't commit to doing the work, and that the other agencies, if you will, the state, Mishna, and the agencies that are coming forward with the money will guarantee that the work is done, because they're loaning the money for the renovations to keep the project viable. And if the money isn't spent that way, if the improvements aren't made, you know, they, they are the ones who will step in and enforce it, if you will.
Okay, I do have a question, I mean, I'm gonna let my other colleagues answer, ask questions. Don, you mentioned that Mishna is reticent to engage or allow these things to happen without with those kinds of revocation clauses. Why is it that we're able to write into the revocation clause anything related to prevailing wage? And not that I don't support the prevailing wage rule there, but why is that different than make, finishing out the promise that you made to the city when inking this deal? And before you answer that, is Danielle Hasty the representative of the company?
There's two of them on here, I think there's an owner and then Danielle's on.
Just a second, Don, Ricky Figueroa and Danielle Hasty, I think, are both, oops, sorry, Angela. Okay, I've got Ricky and Danielle on, but Don, if you want to answer the question first, and then we can, we can have them talk, too.
So that particular language, I don't know if that's been, particular language that you're referencing has been reviewed by Mishna. That language was inserted by the lot department, and I am somewhat concerned about that language. But again, that was, that was not inserted by me, and I think, I think that would, might be something that causes Mishna some concern.
Okay, let's move on to other questions.
There is the Davis Bacon Act, Don.
And that's, and that's correct, I mean, and there's the developer would make this point as well. There's the Davis Bacon requirements that they intend to comply with and have to comply with anyways.
Right.
Got it, okay, because that's federal law still. Thank you, that makes much more sense. We have Councilmember Jackson and Garza, and then we'll close it out.
Thank you, really quickly, ultimately, this question's gonna be for the administration on their opinion for this project, but just also a comment. So the porter falls in the fourth ward, I've been over there a few times, I visited last week to see what the management had to show, and honestly, it did look pretty nice in there, I thought I was gonna see worse, the way they describe it, but I also have heard from residents that, you know, there is a lot of problems, so I'm a little bit torn on that. I'm also torn because there's been at least a history of some constituents that the management hasn't really been forthcoming and open and kind of played some games with citizens' rights and all these different things, which I didn't like, so that, that was one knock. But then again, the fact that the porter serves a vulnerable population is kind of, gives me pause to be inclined to support this, so I kind of wanted to hear the administration's opinion. Because when it comes to like the long-term financial outlook of the city, which is bleak right now, and then 40 years and all these other things, I just kind of want to hear one more case for it before I vote, thank you.
Okay, um. I didn't hear directly a question, but I'll go to Councilmember Garza, and then we'll have someone can respond toward the end.
All right, thank you, President Spatafor. So I toured the property as well, and I was, I was shocked, I didn't think it was gonna be in as good a condition as it is, and it's an old building, I'm a plumber pipefitter by trade, I looked at the mechanical system, the fire suppression system, they have all new flooring in there, and it does serve the population that needs it, and, and I typically don't support payment in lieu of taxes, but they do use local labor, I know the, I don't know him personally, but I've seen him on job sites, he's an ex-IBW member, that's the maintenance guy on grounds, and they use Goieta Mechanical, so they use union labor. Their systems look very well compared to buildings I've seen in the past that are of that age, so I want to support it, and I'm gonna support it, and that's my reason for doing it, because they do hire local labor, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Garza. I heard from Councilmember Spitzley, is your hand up still or again?
No, no, it is not.
Thank you, Councilmember Jackson, I think, did you, did you want the administration to respond to that inquiry that you had? I didn't quite catch it, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I mean, just quickly, kind of like a two-sentence, yes, no, support, why, why not?
Mr. Mayor, do you want to take that one, or?
Yeah, well, we're supportive, this is, this has been a long negotiation with Brian McGrane and Don Kapanic and our EDP working with the developers, they've done several walkthroughs and have worked very closely with the, with the developers, and you know, we think that this is gonna make sure that these folks who are living in an affordable housing property are going to be in a better property. So our folks think that this is good, they've done a lot of work on it, Don can give you any other specifics, but we're supportive.
Thank you. Councilmember Hussein, Hussein, sorry.
Just very quick, and I'll be brief, I was chair of development and planning when we took a look at the 15-year extension back in 2018, and, you know, I was very vocal then, and through that process. I am sick and I am tired of these property owners in these, in these, you know, management companies not holding up their end of the deal. And with all due respect, it is my opinion that the California Commercial Investment Group has not held up their end of the last 15 years. If you look at my ward alone, we have been, the last four and a half years, I cannot tell you the efforts and the energy we have spent going after property owners such as this, management companies such as this that do very, very little to service the most vulnerable in the city of Lansing, but yet here we are constantly being asked to, you know, essentially, you know, celebrate them and to reward them, and that's the reason that we have people living in, in some of these properties, to be quite frank, third-world conditions. And at some point, we're always talking about doing things differently, at some point, we have to do something differently. This, when we talk about payments in lieu of taxes, particularly when you're talking about the 4% variety, the 5% variety, it is, and I think Councilwoman Spitzley talked about it, it's a covenant, it's an agreement between the city of Lansing and that property owner, I should say, that owner and that management company. We are gonna take less than taxes, and to be quite frank, many times we start, when we're talking about 4% and 5%, we end up subsidizing that housing, because the reality is when you back out all the utilities and other costs, and then they give us 4% to 5%, it doesn't typically cover the public services that are needed for that building, it doesn't typically cover the emergency response that is needed for that. It doesn't typically cover the emergency response that is needed for that building. But what we absolutely expect and what we must demand, with all due respect, Mayor Shaw, it can't be, we think they're going to, it has to be, we know they're going to. They absolutely have to be held responsible in terms of supporting the most vulnerable individuals within our community and making sure that they have safe, appropriate housing. And that, who knows, maybe we actually send people out of those circumstances at some point. But they can't do that when we have unsafe, unsanitary housing, predatory property owners, predatory management companies. You know, the reality is this company, this company did not have to come before city council. They could have moved forward with a 10% pilot, they could have moved it through the mayor's office, they could have went to MISHDA with their 10%. They could have revised their redevelopment plan. And guess what? We would have never even been looking at this. We would have got a little bit more in terms of taxes to continue to support that building and continue to support those citizens. And maybe, you know, they would have been able to do a project that, you know, secured some appropriate type of housing, some appropriate level of housing for the individuals that lived there. We have heard time and time again over the past two years, I understand that they put a letter, you know, writing campaign together, but we've heard time and time again over the last few years from folks that live there about the inadequacies of that particular property and about the inadequacies about that, you know, particular management company. And I just, I cannot, I cannot bring myself to reward them with 40 years. This would be 2000, what would this, take us all the way to 2050-something. I just, I can't bring myself to do that. I did visit the property on June 18th. With all due respect to the property manager, to the service coordinator, to the regional VP, to the regional property manager, it felt like the world's greatest dog and pony show. I mean, they were very calculated where they took me, they were very calculated to ensure that I didn't, I never was able to interface with one person that lived there. And so I just cannot, you know, in good conscience, support this. And I just wanted to be on the record as to why. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hussein. Councilmember Jackson, are you up again? Okay, Councilmember Spitsely?
And I'm, you know, and so I've already moved the resolution, but, you know, my, here are my thoughts. Today, on the most humid, hottest day, there is no central air in that building right now. You know, that the residents have to, you know, pay extra for window air conditioners. So, you know, and they've had that building for 15 years. You know, they tick us in, and the rooms are nice. The apartments are theoretically nice, but they need, you know, upkeep. And so my question is, why all of a sudden now that you're doing this and you need a 40-year pilot for it? You know, we do need senior housing. I agree 100%. But, you know, and we've had this conversation before with the city attorney. I am a fan of pilots. I think it is a useful economic development tool. And so for me to come out opposed to this pilot really is quite remarkable, because I am a fan of pilots. But the fact that we can't put any type of language in this ordinance that holds these people's feet to the fire and makes sure that they're going to commit to do what they want, what they propose to do, considering their past behavior. And keep in mind, the management structure, so the regional manager and the regional vice president, they used to be the actual managers of the apartment complex. And so you've got the same structure in there that was part of the problem these past 15 years. And so, you know, I have no confidence that it's going to change. And I think that we need, we need good, safe, clean, affordable housing for seniors. They can come back with a 10% pilot, as Adam said. They could come back with a 7% pilot or 8% pilot and will look at it. But I am not willing to give them a 5% pilot and cross my fingers that they're going to be a better steward than they have been in the past 15 years. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Wood.
Excuse me, thank you, President Spatafor. I appreciate the comments from all the council members, but I especially appreciate the comments from Councilmember Spitsely and Councilmember Hussein. I stated this during the public hearing, that I was deeply concerned that there was a company that has had this building for a number of years and some of the problems that we have seen, that they have had. I mean, we know that they were on the news because of water that was coming in an apartment and roofs were falling, and the ceiling was falling in. We know that there have been a number of complaints by the tenants that have been there. Management has not allowed council members to hold meetings in those buildings, in that building, when the residents reached out to us. And I agree at this particular point with this particular owner and developer, I can't support this. So thank you.
Okay, Mr. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
On the passage of the ordinance to grant the pilot, Councilmember Betts.
No.
Councilmember Dunbar.
No.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
No.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
No.
Councilmember Wood.
No.
Councilmember Spatafor.
No.
Two yeas, six nays, the ordinance is not adopted. And that takes us to the committee of the whole reported an ordinance of this.
I love how his face just is in the funniest things when he freezes too.
Yes, so I will take over the role here. So the committee of the whole reported out an ordinance of the city of Lansing, Michigan to amend the Lansing Codify Ordinances by amending Chapter 292, Section 292.04, to provide for the appointment of a member of the employees' retirement system board of trustees who is a City of Lansing resident but is not an ERS member nor eligible to receive ERS retirement payments. Is read for a second time by its title. The ordinance was reported from the committee of the whole and is on the order for immediate passage. Vice President Hussein.
Yeah, just really briefly, I mean, you covered most of it. We did learn through the process that we do have a Michigan resident position on this particular board. We have a longtime member, Scott Dedek, that is currently serving in that position. But we also understand the merit and the value to having a Lansing resident position on this particular retirement systems board. And so, and so that's essentially what this ordinance does. This would increase the board membership from nine to 10 members, which includes the mayor, council representative, the treasurer, HR director, three members of the retirement system, a resident of Michigan, and now a resident of the city of Lansing. One of the questions that was asked was whether or not the ERS review committee had actually looked at this and advised on this. They have, and my understanding is that this ordinance has received unanimous support. So with that being said, I would move the ordinance for, I'm sorry, to modify the membership of the employees' retirement system board of trustees.
Thank you, Vice President Hussein. I have, first, before we move to you, Councilmember Spitsely, I see that the city attorney's hand is up, so I want to see if he had to, wanted to address anything I did.
Just for the record, Mr. President, the rules don't require the clerk to read, so you're okay.
Okay, good. So no one can sue me on this one. Especially Chris. I don't need an unfair labor practice, Mr. Clerk. All right, so there's that. I see no other hands. This is pretty straightforward. Mr. Clerk, would you please call the roll on the final passage of this ordinance?
On the retirement membership ordinance, Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitsely.
Yes.
Eight yeas, zero nays, the ordinance is adopted.
Vice President Hussein, would you like to move for immediate effect?
Yes.
It's been moved for immediate effect. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
On immediate effect, Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitsely.
Yep.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Okay, immediate effect is ordered, so that ordinance will be in effect as soon as we get it published in the paper. And we are to speaker registration for public comment on city government-related matters. So if you do wish to address council, we need you to virtually raise your hand. Once again, this is any related, any item related to the governance of the city of Lansing. And we will be closing sign up at the end of the first speaker. So while folks are raising their hand, we are to reports of cities' officers and boards.
Sure, so I need a motion. Vice President Hussein.
Sure, President Spatafor, I'd move that all items be considered as read in full and that the proper referrals be made by you.
Thank you. Proper motion is before us. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yep.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
No.
Councilmember Spitsely.
Yes. He's playing around.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor, did you want to change your vote?
I'll go with a yes.
Okay. Eight yeas, zero nays, the referrals are authorized, so we have letters from the city clerk regarding minutes of boards and commissions.
Place that on file.
Lansing Housing Commission Property Transfer Memorandum of Understanding and Legal Descriptions.
Committee of the whole, place that on file.
Joint appointment of Monica, and it's actually a reappointment, I should say, Monica Jainer to the Am County City of Lansing Community Corrections Advisory Board.
Committee on Public Safety.
Letters from the mayor regarding reappointment of Heather Grupel as an at-large member of the Historic District Commission.
Committee on Development and Planning.
Reappointment of James Bell as an at-large member of the Historic District Commission.
Committee on Development and Planning.
Appointment of Samantha Trautman as an at-large member of the Historic District Commission.
I'm sorry, both of mine read fourth ward. Development and planning.
They're all at large on this commission. It was an error that didn't get caught on the way.
Got it, okay, very good. DMP.
Ordinance to amend the property tax poverty exemption guidelines.
Committee of the whole.
Ordinance to consolidate the Building Board of Appeals, Board of Plumbing, Mechanical Board, and Electrical Board into the Construction Board of Appeals.
Committee on Development and Planning.
Montgomery Drain Special Assessment.
Committee of the whole.
Grant application, 2020 lead hazard control grant.
Place that on file.
The appointment of Price Dobernik as a member of the South Martin Luther King Junior Boulevard Corridor Improvement Authority.
Committee on Development and Planning.
Communications and Petition, an affidavit of disclosure, Lori Hagel, Lansing police officer.
Now, the Ethics Board.
And a notice from the Liquor Control Commission, a new SDM license at 621 East Michigan Avenue for Batter Up LLC.
Enthusiastically, I'm referring to the Committee on General Services.
Okay. Remarks by council members.
Councilmember Spitsely.
I just have a question for, did the mayor leave? Oh, there he is. How many more people do we have to reappoint to the Martin Luther King Boulevard Corridor Improvement? Or is it full? How many people are on that? Do you know?
There are eight appointees, seven that come through council and one that's a mayoral appointee. And I believe we have put forward enough to fill the seven spots.
Okay.
We work very closely with Councilman Hussein, and when I say we work closely, I mean, he was intimately involved in conversations along with Hannah Bryant at LEAP. So we have put forward enough to fill the seven spots, and then I'll be making an appointment. But we're balancing the business owners and the folks who live within a half a mile of the resident. We actually have the resident already. I think you just appointed Don Silver, so he's the resident. So it's all sent to you, it's just coming in shifts. And I think Price Dobernik was, needed to be added to make the full seven.
All right.
Thank you. Other council members with comments? Okay, I see none. I just want to say real quick, thank you all for hanging in, and sorry if I got a little slap happy there, but I think it was a good meeting this evening. Also, we have eight people who raised their hands. As a reminder, if you want to raise your hand for public comment, do so quickly, because we're closing that out after the first person speaks. And I don't want anyone to text me after the meeting on Facebook or otherwise and say that they wanted to raise their hand, but didn't get in the deadline. Here's your warning. Okay.
We're to the mayor's comments.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, I wanted to add in, earlier in the meeting, there was a conversation of the police board commissioners. So there was a mention that there are three open spots. We have sent over DA Jones, which the council president referenced. He's a young professional living in Lansing. He's very involved in the Lansing Football League with the, with Kappa Alpha Psi and the Kappa Express. So he is in your hands, and I greatly hope that you approve him. I believe we're sending over a woman, or we may have already sent it over and maybe getting read in or read in in the next meeting, Holly McDermott, who's a criminologist in the first ward. We're still working on the third ward, so I've got a few names that I'm looking at. And we're trying to make a decision on that, so I'm still looking at that, so people can still apply if they're interested and they live in the third ward. We consult with Councilman Hussein on a lot of these things, it's been very helpful. I do want to mention that in the last two years since I became mayor, of the eight members, we have put two new members on that board. Aaron Milton, who's a local pastor and has been fantastic, Julie Rodiker, who was at the suggestion of Councilman Garza. So with the three that we will be appointing, and those two, five of the eight members of the police board commissioners are new members in the last two years. So I think that's significantly good turnover. The only member that's, when we also reappointed Clyde Carnegie today, that was done, and Patty Farhat last year. So I think William Renfer is the only one that hasn't come through. So there has been some good change and additions. I think that Pastor Milton and Julie have both been good additions to that board and look forward to you taking up DA Jones, and we'll get you Holly McDermott if we haven't already, and then we'll get you a third ward appointee pretty soon. And again, anybody who's in the third ward who wants to apply, please do. We look forward to your applications. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Clerk?
Okay, we are to, and I would note that Holly McDermott was referred at the last council meeting, so she's already before council. All right, we are to public comment on city government-related matters. And again, after the first speaker, we will be closing the sign up for public comment, so get that virtual hand raised if you wish to address city council type. And the first speaker is Angela Waters-Austin, followed by Laura Anderson. Angela, go ahead.
Angela, you're permitted, you can talk, but you have to unmute yourself.
Hello, Angela Waters-Austin. I didn't raise my hand, but since I'm here. I will give a comment.
Raise.
Yeah, thank you for opening my mic. And after listening for weeks and weeks and weeks, I'm still here, just making sure that we are being clear that the budget is to resources for communities that have been ignored for decades, and to make sure that the resources are going to the places that they need to go, so that we don't continue to keep having to increase and militarize our policing budget. And it is vitally essential that council understands that this is not something that's just going to go away, and that our voices matter, our lives matter. And you can't say that you actually support Black Lives Matter, but then turn a deaf ear when the community makes demands that affect our lives every day. And even if it does affect you or the people that you know and love, please trust and understand that we are fighting. Even if it does affect you, or the people that you know and love, please trust and understand that we are fighting for our lives and the lives of our loved ones, and we will not stop, and we will not go away, and Andy, the demand for your resignation, it stands. You have done nothing but promote propaganda, and we will continue to call you out, we will continue to call you in, you have had many opportunities to show up for the community and do the right thing, instead of ignoring us and pretending like we don't exist. You dig a hole for yourself, deeper and deeper and deeper, and we will ensure that you do not get a second time. And that's all I have to say, I did not raise my hand, but there it is, and that's from Black Lives Matter, that's from Angela Waters Austin, and we are not going away.
Okay, thank you, next is Michael Lynn Jr., followed by Erica Spitzfaden, Michael, go ahead.
I know, Andy want to crawl in a hole right now, listen, this is what I have to say, first, a couple of things. I want to obviously say the same things, Andy, you need to resign, that's obvious. I think Patricia Spitzley said it best why, when we were talking about the housing in the California group that's here, is that the same structure, that's a part of the problem, can't continue to exist, that's, that's a fact. Andy Shore, I asked you on To America's Twin New Life, tonight I have, Anna Hussein is going to be coming on to speak about these issues, I've had Patricia Spitzley on, and Brandon Betts. The door is wide open still for you to come on the show, we'd love to ask some questions of the community. Outside of that, I think if the mayor spent, when we're talking about these committees, I think if the mayor spent as much money promoting these committees as he does like propaganda and fixing his image in the city, more people would probably sign up for it. But we don't know how many people have signed up for it, because they never see the list. So you really just get to pick whoever you want and feel more comfortable with, and all these people are doctors, and they're, you know, when you put out the list of what these people have done in their lives, or what they've done career-wise, that doesn't translate to understanding what is going on in the street level. Now, DA, I love DA, that's my guy, I mess with DA, cool dude, but my problem is that this is how you keep focusing on, you have this image of black imagery that if they're a doctor, a lawyer, or if there's some type of, of whatever the case is, that they must be qualified for these positions, and that's a problem. And if you're the only person seeing the list, that's a bigger problem, given the fact that you're the same structure that created the problem, so that's that. It's funny that nobody in these committees has ever just worked at QD, when you're explaining who this person is, oh, it's Jennifer such and such, she's an QD employee and a alumni of Everett High School is now on the police committee, that just never happens, right? So that needs to start happening more often. Outside of that, the police budget, you guys threw those numbers out there, that's great, and it's like, it shows everybody, hey, we can't get rid of any money here because we have all these people and all this stuff. Well, if you didn't have all these people and all this stuff, you could get a whole lot of rid of that money up there. So that's, that's part of that problem, we're going to work through that, obviously, with the committee. But that seems like more propaganda to throw that up there, great. Outside of that, I've been talking about the housing aspect, and these landlords and slumlords, and Adam, I appreciate you speaking out on that, I don't know if that was like a prerequisite to coming on America's Twin New Life, you got it in though, my boy. I appreciate you, that's true, these guys can't come in here and just leave these places to dump and die, Logan Square is one of those, I believe is owned by that California group in the Southwest, in the Third Ward, that's got to stop, so I appreciate you guys bringing that up. Dr. Carnegie, love him again, but again, 16 years to make these changes, now that people's asses are on the table, now it's time, excuse my language. Outside of that, Mayor Shore, you definitely have the, the invite to come on America's Twin New Life, but also to resign.
Okay, thank you, the next speaker is Erica Spitzfaden, and then Sam Inglot, and I would remind folks that we are now closed to adding more speakers to the list, so Erica, please go ahead.
Hi, this is Erica Spitzfaden, I am now a Lansing resident, I'll be registering a vote very soon, I primaries in my old, because I haven't changed my address yet. You know, I did get a chance to listen in on the Diversity and Inclusion Committee that's been formed by the city council, and I really appreciate the level of professionalism that the city council has. And I think I want to echo what Mr. Michael Lynn Jr. was just saying, and some of the things I also heard with the Board of Water and Light appointees is that we're bringing in folks who are super qualified, they've been in the field a long time, and what that means is that they're indoctrinated indoctrinated in whatever that field's philosophy is. And we need to bring in new people, young people, people who don't have a policing background, people who, you know, are thinking outside of the box, trying to come up with creative ways to solve these money problems, so that we can take this money instead of wasting it on expensive equipment that these police are tempted to use, that we can funnel it to programs that are going to benefit the community. You know, the Board of Water and Light has an automotive garage, why can't the city work out a deal with the Board of Water and Light and have the car sticks there? That saves them money, you know, just cutting police officers isn't going to be enough, there's going to have to be some more creative thinking in solving these financial problems from a business side, and yeah, sure, you need people that can do that, but you also need folks that are from the community, young people who are going to come in and say, look, this is my future, this is what I need, this is what I need to be safe and be protected. And so I think that we need to do a better job of getting the word out on these police commission appointments, because it is kind of a gray area, a black box, you know, this is something that I'm only just becoming aware of, it's not like I don't pay attention, I have you know, honestly, it's mostly Facebook these days for me, I'm not really big on TV news, but we have to find a way to get the word out to where the people are, you know, what can we do to advertise these opportunities that we start attracting folks to these commissions and positions that are going to come in with the right ideas? And, yeah, I know it's a late night, I appreciate your time, and I want to thank everyone, thank you.
And thank you, next we have Sam Inglot, followed by Melina Brand, Sam, go ahead.
Thank you, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, so Sam Inglot, East Med resident for the past eight years, appreciate the opportunity to speak. So, real quick, I would like to adjust, address the pilot vote, I'm glad to see the way that it went, it sounds like there have been problems with that management company, and I just want to give a quick word of advice to Councilman Garza. You know, the idea of using local labor, like, that should be like a bare minimum, and I'm totally on board with supporting things that use local labor, but that should be like the floor, not the ceiling. You know, we can't just let unions be staffing agencies and stuff like that for developers and management companies that don't do right by Lansing. If people aren't being responsible with, you know, their place in the city, then we need to hold them accountable for that. So I just encourage you to think a little bit more broadly, like, definitely, like, local labor, union labor, 100% solidarity, right? But think about it in the whole terms of accountability and the scope of the project, so that's one thing. Second thing is, I hope that everyone will support removing that parking ordinance from two to five. It's needed to go for a long time, I'm glad to see that's moving now. And as always, I want to speak out in support of the demands of Black Lives Matter Lansing. I want to speak out in support of the Betts and Dunbar Resolution, that's before the Equity, Inclusion, and Diversity Committee. And I was glad to see that there was at least some discussion around these appointments, and just know that the people of Lansing are going to be expecting the council to look over this, these appointments with a fine-tooth comb and a magnifying glass. As always, I want to bring up the Lansing Police Transparency website. The Police Complaints Open Data Portal is woefully inadequate, the complaint section is so vague, it does nothing to explain what happened or how it was dealt with. It's like getting a receipt from the grocery store with not showing what you bought, it's like getting a grade on your school paper without showing what you got wrong. It's largely useless for the public to get a good look at how the LPD is operating and how problem cops are being dealt with, so I just want to renew my call to open up complaints and disciplinary action to FOIA requests, so we can improve that transparency in Lansing and have more accountability and openness with the public. And lastly, you know, I don't know how many people are in line still, but public comment is one thing. You know, that may ebb and flow at these meetings, but just know that the people of Lansing are organizing, whether you see it or not. We have, you know, we are woken up to the cause of racial justice, to community equity and police reform, and know that we are doing work, not just for these meetings, not just for today, but for the future, and we will hold people accountable at the ballot box who refuse to reimagine what public safety looks like and continue to toe the line of the status quo, thank you.
Thank you, next we have Melina Brand, followed by Margaret Pillath.
Hi, thank you, my name is Melina Brand, I live in Ward One, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. So the amount of money we spend on our police department is absurd, and I can't believe that some of you still want to add more police even after hearing how much we are spending and knowing how little crime truly gets solved. I also want to remind the council that all of those costs from the report that Councilmember Wood mentioned are not fixed costs, besides the legacy costs, those will all decrease as we lay off more employees. It sounds like we have plenty of revenue avenues to decrease and reallocate. Week after week, citizens come here and express the importance of defunding and reallocating funds into the community, and the privileged tone of which some of the council members present information is very unsettling. And hearing that council members are telling people that council is not going to pass the defunding resolution before we even have public hearings for it is awful, now we know that you're not listening to the people. I'm glad that some of these numbers from that report are out here, but the whole point of this movement is to decrease the number of police on the streets, not the number of equipment we have, not the number of contracts, those will not help us. Those will not stop the overpolicing in our black and brown communities. Let's take this seriously, council members, and do the right things for the people you represent, not just your donors. I support the Betts and Dunbar Resolution, and I hope you all will too. Today, I started a website that monitors and records all of your votes, so that it will be transparent and public to everyone, so look forward to that, I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you, next we have Margaret Pillath, followed by Julia Kramer. Margaret.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, I am a special education teacher in the Lansing School District, and a Lansing resident in the Fourth Ward. As you likely already know, families in Lansing rely on public schools for so much more than an education. Lansing families need support from the local government, and this does not look like investing in the police. That police budget would be much better spent on city organizations and outreach to stop violence and to stop overpolicing our children. The police need to be defunded and abolished. It is vital that we divest from the police and invest in our community, in our black, brown, and indigenous families and students. Andy Shore needs to resign, we need someone in the mayor's office who makes decisions that support the black community. I support the Betts Dunbar Resolution. Black lives matter, black students matter. I yield the rest of my time. Thank you.
Thank you, next is Julia Kramer, followed by Tajmika Tora. Julia, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Y'all, this has been a wild night. I have really enjoyed this meeting, particularly with the storm, it's just been like, very intense, so, and I'm exhausted, and I like, cannot imagine how y'all are feeling after so many hours of this, so I really appreciate your perseverance, I really appreciate the service that you guys provide, thank you so much for doing this. I will not waste very much time, just really wanted to say, I support the removal of the 2:00 AM to 5:00 AM parking ordinance, that is great. I unfortunately will not be able to attend the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Meeting this Wednesday, I was really hoping to, but can't do things on Wednesdays. So I, I'm following this process really closely, following the budget process really closely, I've really enjoyed learning more about it, and I want to make sure to voice my support for the, the resolution that Betts and Dunbar introduced, and I really hope that we're able to get that through the process in time for that October 1st deadline, I'm really, really hoping that y'all will pass it through, so, thank you so much, and I hope that you sleep really well tonight.
Thank you, next we have Tajmika Tora, followed by Erica Lynn. Tajmika, go ahead.
Okay, you can hear me, correct?
Yes.
Hi, Tajmika Tora, I am a resident in Lansing, I know and have met many of you. I am here tonight to ask you to be as committed and creative in your search or seeking to defund the police as you have been in defending the police budget. I'm so glad that you have those numbers, I think that what's really important about those numbers is that we have insight into how much money we are taking away from the people of Lansing. We are in the middle of the COVID-19 crisis, where children, families were literally unable to eat once the schools were shut down. What if we had the opportunity to funnel millions of dollars to actually feed children, to make sure that they are not homeless, to make sure that we are doing right by the, by the community of Lansing? We know that in the state of Michigan, although black people, people of color make up only like 30% of the population, more than 55% make up the prison population. City of Lansing, you could be a part of changing that bias, changing that discrimination, changing the way that that has an impact on the families. One in 10 children has an incarcerated member of their family in the state of Michigan. We have the power right now to change that. We know that reform fails, we know that bias training fails, we know that pacifying unions and the police fails, we know that PR campaigns, and yes, Andy Shore, I'm talking to you, that fails and does not save black people, does not save the children in our communities. We need to defund the police. I also want to lift up the fact that although you're hearing a bunch of voices from the community, you are not hearing all of them, because these meetings are incredibly inaccessible. You don't provide captions, and although you're willing to accommodate, why are we offering accommodations when we know that people with disabilities deserve them, because they're a part of our community? And they are, they are impacted by police violence too. If you want to hear from the people who are mostly impacted by police violence, then we need to make sure that these meetings are more accessible to everyone, and if we can acknowledge during COVID that children don't have access to technology the same way as everybody else, and we should be able to acknowledge that the people who've been incarcerated and their income has been impacted by 16% over time probably don't have the kind of technology that we all have to show up to these meetings. What are you doing in terms of making sure that the members of these communities that are institutionalized, have formerly been incarcerated, are deaf, have disabilities, are able to participate in this process? Your committees don't mean anything if you don't hear from all of us. We need everybody at the table, and it's your job to make sure that that happens. I really want to encourage you to be creative, be committed, and have some imagination, people, we have an opportunity to transform Lansing. Let's do it, defund the police.
Thank you, next Erica Lynn, and then Jonathan. Erica, go ahead.
Hello, Erica Lynn again. Thank you, everybody, it has been definitely a long night. I would like to first and foremost throw support, as always, for the Betts Dunbar Resolution to defund the police and reallocate funds, and I echo everything that Tajmika so eloquently just said, but I also wanted to talk about something that popped up kind of recently on the, on my radar about a nonprofit who sole purpose is a pro Lansing campaign. This came out, and it actually, why is it important, it was actually made public the day before of the Racial Equity Alliance was, was made public, so this happened within two days of each other, and why that's important is it just so happens to be run by TJ Buchholz of Vanguard Public Affairs. Vanguard Public Affairs also employs Tricia Bingman, and why is this all important? Is because this is also the same person that started a campaign while Andy Shore was campaigning, while Virgil Manner was still in office, running basically a smear campaign, if anyone remembers the No Secret Lansing Deals website. And why is this all important, and why did it give me pause for, you know, concern, is because this is just yet another thing in a long line of what everyone is kind of terming as propaganda perpetuated by Andy Shore. Now, as far as the Equity Alliance, I have a lot of faith in the members of that community, that they're going to do what they came to do. With Lansing in mind, I however have zero faith in Mayor Shore's reasoning behind the creation of that committee, and this Vanguard thing is just one of the long lists of why, I am horrified and deeply saddened that he refuses to even acknowledge the specific issues regarding the racial discrimination, retaliation that's going on right now in our city, in his office, in the LFD. I am so beyond disappointed that the courageous voices that have come out and risked so much, not only for themselves, for their own justice, but for the future of employees to come, and they've just been blatantly ignored completely. So how can we, I ask the council and Mayor Shore, how can we as a city move forward without acknowledging the harm the harm that's been done to these people and without repairing the damage that's been done? What it looks like to me and many others is that the only thing that Andy Shore's priority is right now is repairing his public image. There's no actual substantial change at all whatsoever that we can see, and I can't, with good conscience, allow us as a city to move forward, not at least quietly, with a path of destruction behind us. And neither should any of you. So for that, I just again voice my support for the Black Lives Matter call for Mayor Shore to resign. I have lost all faith in his ability to lead our great city, and I do not trust the direction that your leadership has taken us so far. I yield the rest of my time.
My baby. Thank you. The next speaker is Jonathan, followed by Ethan Schmidt.
Good evening. First, a couple of thank yous. Councilman Betts, thank you for, I didn't realize that, I just saw Councilwoman Dunbar's name on it, but thank you for fixing this parking issue. Let's continue to enforce parking where it's needed, but a blanket, no parking overnight rule is simply ridiculous. A thank you to Councilwoman Spitzley. I was on the diversity call, I think, last week, and thank you for your comments in response to my concerns. I'm glad to hear that you're committed against, you know, racist diversity hiring policies. They spit in the face of qualified applicants, and it's troubling. And I'm glad that you also want the best and most competent hires. You know, as I said, I'd be happy to be rescued by a cop or a firefighter of any race, and I want my city run by the best and the brightest, just like you. Onto the issue about police defunding. Let's watch other towns experiment. You know, if there is a town that is successful in eliminating police budgets and transferring that money elsewhere, and it works, all the better. Although I think that our police force is right now is stretched thinly enough. It's not impoverished, but it's stretched thinly enough, and I don't know that it could take, it could take big cuts. If it's issues of economics or mental health, you know, economics first, what are we doing to bolster local businesses? What are we doing to get people to open up co-ops, for example? If it's mental health, I believe Senator Stabinow recently is making some inroads and reversing Governor Engler's disastrous policies back in, I believe it was the 90s. And maybe, maybe milleages are the way to go. Maybe the taxpayer agrees with some of you that think that some of that money would be better spent elsewhere. But don't cut the police to pay for another program. No defunding, yes to accountability. Absolutely, we want a police force that protects our constitutional rights, and we want a police force, a police department that will boot bad cops that violate our constitutional rights. And to the council as a whole, all of you, the loudest that call in aren't the majority. Don't be bullied by people that have thinly veiled threats. Thank you all for your service to our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Ethan Schmidt, followed by Zoe Steinfield.
Thank you very much for allowing me to speak today. I first want to give a big shout out to Councilwoman Spitzley for doing such a good job with the DEI Committee. You obviously understand how hard of a job this is, and you've done nothing, I have nothing but respect for how you've handled everything. So I just wanted to say really good job there, and I really appreciate it. Today, I just want to make sure that we understand, that we try to understand things from kind of a different point of view than we traditionally do. And the two examples that come up are how we think about police, how we think about the parking ordinance. And when we think about how we pass laws, and when we think about how we're quote-unquote "making the city better," I want us to start thinking about like, who is paying the cost and who is getting the benefit, and how is that matched up historically over time? For example, if we have a ban on parking on the street, who is that hitting? Who is being hurt by that the most? I'm lucky enough that I have a garage, for example, on the east side. It's very rare to have a garage, and I'm very lucky to have that. And a lot of people have to park on the street because they have roommates as well, and I'm lucky enough to not have a roommate. Well, I guess some people like their roommates, but you know, I'm introverted and happy, very happy to not have them at the moment. And when it comes to policing, and think about like, oh, well, it's not about people might not feel safe. Well, who's not feeling safe and who doesn't feel safe now? And how are we thinking about public safety in this way? So I want us to really change the way we think about very fundamental parts of how we view government. I also think about how we think about who's the most qualified position. I remember at the DEI, the same person who spoke before me also mentioned, I want the most qualified position, not basically affirmative action hire, but I must think, if you don't have a diverse staff, then you're not getting the most qualified people. I want to stop thinking it's either or, when in fact, it's both. And I want to stop thinking about defunding as not accountability. When defunding is accountability. It is saying, look, you have had many, many times to fix this. You haven't, and this is how we hold you accountable. This is what we have in our power as a council and as the mayor's office. And I think sometimes we do an either-or situation, when in fact, it's both. So thank you for, thank you for listening to me today. And again, Congress, Councilwoman Spitzley, thank you so much for everything you did.
Thank you. And our final speaker tonight is Zoe Steinfield.
Hi, can you all hear me?
Yes.
So I wanted to voice my support for Councilmembers Betts and Dunbar's Resolution to defund the police. I live and work in Lansing, and I've lived in the Lansing area my whole life. I'm a social worker here in Lansing, and I can tell you from firsthand experience, I've been, you know, in my career, I've worked with a number of low-income youth of color, and including some who were involved with crimes, like in violence, or theft, or dealing drugs. And what came up time and time again was that they were not doing that because of a lack of, like, morality, or a, some kind of, you know, lack of discipline from their parents or from the legal system. Nothing that could be made better by increased policing or punishment. The reason that, the reason that youth are involved in these things, when they are, is out of material need. Some are involved in these kinds of things to provide for their families. Others, because they're caught up in cycles of violence that have the root in someone else's desire to provide for their families. And some are just doing so out of a sense of hopelessness, or too numb experiences of trauma. And all of this has their root in a lack of resources. So I guess what I'm saying is, if we believe that, if we want police because we think it's going to make us safer, that's not, that's not how we get there. Safety is something that we all deserve, but it's not something that you can punish people into behaving more safely. People behave safely when they have their material needs met. So a bloated police budget is going to criminalize these youth and funnel them from their families and their futures into inhumane incarceration. It also drains our city's common resources to the point where we can't address the root cause of the suffering in the first place. So let's stop wasting our money on the poisonous Band-Aid of the police and start investing in a more equitable city. With 50% of the police budget, how many people can we house? How much mental health and substance use disorder treatment can we provide? How many more schools can we keep open with adequate programming to keep our young people stimulated? How much more can we resource our community health centers? How much more can we invest in green space in the South Side? There's, you know, there's a million ways that we can, that we can provide for our community that will create safety and prevent crime before it even happens, and build a happier, healthier, more equitable community for our neighbors of color. So, you know, the world is watching our country right now, and our-
Thank you. Your time is up. Thank you. And that was our final speaker.
Okay. Thank you all for participating in public comment this evening. And City Council, thank you for your patience this evening, as we mustered through a little bit of technical difficulty. With no further business before the Lansing City Council at 10:50 PM, we are adjourned.